Another kind of bump in the road, it's not a dead end. You know, the high school and part of the middle school will be all remote till next Thursday, but then we'll be, we'll be back in business presumably next Friday. So adhering to a lot of guidelines, a lot of changing guidelines. As far as sports, of course, in the fall, we did not, our section, section nine voted to not do the sports back in September and October. We had a little bit of delay starting some winter sports, but they are underway. And we'll talk a little bit more about interclassics sports in my superintendent's report. And really, you know, I know that we were slowly moving towards a one-to-one device program. But you know, due to, you know, the situation with, you know, the pandemic, really, we were forced to very quickly move to that one-to-one devices. And, and we've done it. So we are now a K through 12, one-to-one device district. And we have a plan in place for replacement cycle so that, you know, this will continue moving forward. So that's goal one really has been met and continues to be met.
So goal two is much more about curriculum and instruction. And of course, again, in this very unusual year, our primary concern has been, you know, how, how do we deliver instruction for our students both remotely and when they're in person? But we had some other things to work on as well. Part of that was continuing our work in our K-12 math program. As we've mentioned in the past, we have a Bosse's content specialist who is working at the middle school, specifically with our math teachers, but also with other non-math people to try to reinforce math concepts across the entire curriculum, six through nine. We're looking at math programs, both at the elementary and the middle school as well. You will be, the next presentation that we have tonight will be our school improvement plan, our step plan from New York State for both the elementary and the middle school. Because of our TSI designation, math is included in that plan. So we'll be giving you more particulars about that shortly. And we've been providing training on and off throughout the whole school year about remote learning and, and handing out or distributing resources for teachers. And we have a tremendous number of teachers who are taking advantage of PD opportunities through Ulster Bosse's. Those are all being provided remotely after school hours. And we have many teachers who are taking advantage of that. As far as the K-12 science learning standards, the new standards, we are continuing to work on that inquiry-based model, which is their biggest shift with the New York State Learning Standards, Science Standards this year. So we're continuing that work, although it really hasn't been our primary focus so far. And then the New York State three through eight testing, I think I mentioned at the board meeting last week, that the state, New York State, has submitted a waiver to the federal government to ask that we waive the three-through-eight testing this school year. So right now, again, that's really in a holding pattern until we hear what's going to happen from the federal government for New York State. So we have the materials ready to go. It's just a matter of whether we need to do that or not this year. Goal number three, continue to support the social emotional needs of our students, you know, along with providing instruction for our students, supporting their social emotional health has been very important. We'll actually be talking about that in our third presentation. When we talk about attendance and engagement issues, and you'll be seeing more of the work that we're doing there. Anonymous alerts will be up and running by the, by the end of this week. We should see it on the website today, Wednesday or Thursday. We have school psychologists, support personnel, social workers, counselors, who are going to be visiting classes to introduce anonymous alerts, kind of go through it, show teach, or show students where they can find it. We'll be sending out PR to families again later this week. With all the other things that we've been sending out, we didn't want to send too much out together. So we're trying to spread this out a little bit, but that will be in place as of the end of this week. Trauma-informed instruction, we are meeting tomorrow in cabinet to look at some offerings from Ulster County Department of Health. They are, they will come in and do PD for our teachers and for our support staff about trauma-informed instruction. That's also part of our panorama survey that I'll be talking about later in this presentation. The backpack program is a little bit on hold right now because of the way that we're offering instruction. It's a little bit more difficult for us to get things to the students from school. So the Methodist Church in town has very graciously kind of taken that over. And parents are coming and picking up food from the Methodist Church rather than us distributing it as we have done in the past. I think that once, hopefully, we get back to a more normal school environment next school year, we'll probably reinstitute that more fully than we have this year.
But our, you know, food delivery every Wednesday, really, you know, we're giving the students a week's worth of food for anyone who is interested in it. So I don't think there's anyone who is, who needs the support or wants the support. I think they're getting it from either school or the Methodist Church.
Goal four, create a comprehensive racial equity initiative. I think we've been updating you pretty regularly on the work that's being done here. As you know, we have a district level committee that's meeting once a month as of right now. We are looking at forming those building level committees. I think that will be more the work now with the district level committee. We have a mission statement, we have more of a focus for going forward. So we're going to be breaking into smaller committees. And one of those committees will be those, those building level, building level programs. And then I'll talk about this a little bit more in my report. But the climate and cultural rights equity groups and surveys, as we've already mentioned before, Dr. LeBlanc has done some parent-focused groups. And then we will be issuing this week, students will be participating in this this week, a district-wide survey electronically that's open to students, teachers, as well as parents. We will be using that information to do more focus groups with all three of those, those groups. But we've really been doing a lot of information gathering as we've gone through the year, specifically around climate and culture. And then as we look at, you know, as we're going into the second half of the school year here, we're going to start some of the work with evaluating and updating our curriculum in a culturally responsive way. That's just beginning. My thought is that we'll probably do more of that work over the summer, really dig into that work in the summertime. But we're going to get started with it shortly. And then hiring practices, you know, right at the point now where we're starting to know who we might need to hire, what, what positions we have open. So that will be some of our conversation moving forward there. That would also work for the committee.
And one concept that we have been discussing, Mrs. Dudley Lemick and I, along with Dr. LeBlanc, I've also spoken with a few other school districts. So other school districts have found that as they kind of get into the work of their equity committee, it is, you know, it, it needs constant attention, of course. And it kind of needs more hands in there, someone who has the time. So I know that some school districts do have a concept where they have a teacher on special assignment. So it's something that we are looking at. So that means that, for example, if it was a secondary teacher, that they would teach three classes instead of five. And then in that other time during their day, it would be an unpaid position, but they would have the title of the equity coordinator. And they would work hand in hand with the study Lemick and myself, but also with Dr. LeBlanc. So that they would be that, you know, go-to person that people can get in touch with. You know, they would work with Dr. LeBlanc to kind of schedule Dr. LeBlanc of what students he's going to see, what teachers he's going to see. You know, they'll help coordinate the meetings, set the agendas. I just think it's something that, you know, because, you know, Mr. Dudley Lemick really has, you know, really is carrying the water much more than I am on this, just because of the nature of the jobs. But you, you need more people, you need more people that are involved. So I know that other school districts, some school districts have a full-time person. You know, we're not there yet, but I think it would be a home run for Highland and for Equity Initiative to have some person who's dedicated to that. So that's something that we will be looking at. Again, it's not going to cost us any money, it would just be kind of working out the sections in a particular subject area so that the person would have that time during the day. So I did, you know, have an informal conversation with HTA. And, you know, certainly they are very interested in having this position also. So stay tuned.
Go five?
Well, five, maintain the fiscal stability of the Highland Central School District. So I know Mrs. Gillette has been, you know, really reporting since basically October. You know, the, as you see, the budget process is almost never ending. You know, there's only a handful of months where we're not talking about the budget. So, you know, we have, in the three and a half years I've been here, you know, we have been presenting very sound budgets that do meet the needs of our district and that the voters support. The, Mrs. Gillette did present the district fund balance and reserve plans, and we are in good shape. I think we'll be talking a little bit more about that tonight, a little later in the meeting, when we do talk about the budget for this year. Of course, we are continuing to review the business office operations. And as we're all aware, sadly, Mrs. Gillette is going to be leaving us at the end of the month. So we wish her well and all the best. But as we bring in a new business official, we will continue to look at the efficiency of our operations. And certainly, you know, I know, Mr. Gillette, you know, we're creating, we are creating, we're always in the process of creating a long-range financial plan. And that really ties in with that fund balance plan. I don't know, Mrs. Gillette, if there's anything else you wanted to jump in and add to this slide?
Just want to remind the board and administration that we did start the initial process of a long-range financial plan at the beginning of January, when we reviewed the tax cap history and also looked at tax cap projections and how important it is to keep that a level playing field. So there aren't any fluctuations in the tax cap calculation. Thank you.
Very good. So that's where we are with five months left of school. You know, we really have hit, you know, a very large percentage of all the points that we wanted to in a very challenging year. You know, there are some of our initiatives, both the ones listed here and ones not listed here. You know, I, one important thing I've found in my years serving in leadership positions, you can't, especially in times like this, you can't throw too much at the faculty and staff and the community. Right now, you know, I think everyone's COVID levels, as far as stress, are very high. So people's time is, is limited. So, you know, we are, you know, we have five months of school left. As I said, I think we will hit, you know, pretty much all of our goals. But it is all in the timing so that you make sure you have that buy-in from everyone. Any questions from any or comments from any of the board members?
I would just like to say, I, I find that Highland has done an absolutely phenomenal job in dealing with the hybrid versus remote. I, I think we stand out among the schools in, in Ulster in, in getting hybrid when we can. And I think you've done a tremendous job.
Well, thank you. Really, you know, it's a, it's a team effort. Really, it's everyone, it's all, it's all the administration, but, and it's the faculty and staff. So, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Tom and Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Barone.
Move on to our next special presentation and Sarah.
Okay.
Our targeted school improvement plan, TSI.
Great. I'm gonna share my screen once again. And I think Joel and Ryan, and I'm not sure if Matt and Megan are helping out with this too. So as we've mentioned several times throughout the, the school year, we were designated from New York State as a targeted school or needing improvement, basically, in both our elementary and our middle school. And specifically, last year, it was for our African-American and Black students. This is a smaller percentage of our population overall. But that means that our schools did not, or our, our target group did not perform as well as they should in the 2018-19 state assessments. I am not going to spend a lot of time going over the composite scores and the growth levels and all of those kinds of things. We've, we've kind of gone through this in other years before. I think it's suffice it to say that this is an area that we need work. We have looked at a lot of these numbers. We're, we're still working to break down as much as we can where students and how students performed. But keep in mind that this is based on the test that they took in 2018-19. So basically, two years ago in the spring, because we didn't have tests last spring. And it's looking, you know, we're, we're not sure if we're going to have them this year. So as far as that part of the data, that's, that's pretty old data. So those students, those students who were in third grade are now in fifth grade this year. So, you know, we're, we're looking at it, but it's, it's not as big an impact for us as some of our more local assessments that we do. Now, in creating these set plans, I have to really say, our two building teams did a tremendous amount of work and spent a tremendous amount of time talking and working and listening to put together these plans. We, we heard from students, we heard from parents, we heard from teachers, and we did this through some surveys. We did this through our focus groups that Dr. LeBlanc led. I conducted a series of interviews of teachers and students in both buildings. Well, students at the middle school, not at the elementary school, but groups of teachers, individually with teachers, to get a feeling for, for where they felt the work needed to be done. And then each building had their own committee of teachers, as well as other stakeholders, to, to put together this plan. So this is really input from many, many different areas of our school community. The process is, is intense. You start to build your TSI teams at the building level. Then you go through this data collection and it's, each teacher creates a, or does a survey that's a tenant. There's, there's several different tenants and they go through, there's probably about 15 to 30 different areas that they're breaking down, whether it's leadership, whether it's instructional delivery, whether it's connection to the school, connection to families. Tom, you have it up, is that what you have up there? So they go through and they, they rate it on whether this is something they feel like we're doing a good job with, that they feel like it's something that we've started but could do more work. They rated on whether we haven't even done anything with it. And so that information, you'll see in our, our goals, we use that. We looked at student work across the spectrum of the students in the building, both in ELA and math. So there, there's a lot that, that really went into this. And then from all of that data collection, we looked at five goals. One of the goals needs to be an ELA goal, one needs to be a math goal, one has to really be the result of a survey. And then depending on what you've been targeted for, it could be absenteeism or it could be two other goals chosen by the school. And you'll see that we have both of that right now. And then from there, you need to create the plan, which you've received, both the set plan for the elementary school as well as the middle school. What this presentation is going to do is going to break down those goals and talk about them a little bit. So you have a little more detail behind it or have a better picture of where we're going to go. So I'm going to hand it over to Ryan now to talk about the middle school goals.
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, everyone. I hope you and your families are all doing well. I would first like to start off by really thanking the, the middle school team. They did an amazing amount of really difficult work in a very short period of time. So I wanted to take a second and recognize them by name. And I also think that this is important so that you see how diverse of a group of stakeholders we had on our team as part of our decision-making. So we had Leona Pacolar, who is foreign language, Sean Banks, technology, Pete Foreman, math, Nicky Monaperto, math, Marissa Curcio, special education, Jen Curlis, social studies, Connor Kenny, school counselor, Cody Weaver, science teacher, Cindy Chalais, a teaching assistant, Carol Delia, an ELA teacher. And those were just the, that was just one component of, of this bigger picture. And they gave up snow days, they worked on snow days and evenings to help us put this together. So I definitely want to give a very, very big thank you out to that team. So our first goal is related to math. And so when deciding the type of goal that we were going to set, we had a interesting discussion trying to figure out which data points to go off of, particularly because we want this work to be meaningful. And we are taking the approach that every single one of these goals is the responsibility of every teacher in every content area. The math goals are not for math teachers, the ELA goals are not for ELA teachers, so on and so forth. Because we all teach math, we all teach English, we all have a part in making our school community. And so when deciding what to focus our efforts on, we decided to look at how we can come together as a school community to move us forward, not what can small pockets of people do to move our school community forward. So since we are utilizing the STAR assessment, we did administer the STAR assessment in the fall. And our goal for the end of the year is a, an average of 10% student growth from whatever it was that they scored originally. And some of the ways that we plan on accomplishing that goal is through utilizing our instructional coach from Ulster Bosse's, David Trantor, he's, has some very wonderful things planned for not only our math teachers, but for how every content area can support those concepts in math. But also, very importantly, establishing a common vocabulary. Because what we've noticed is happening is that every pocket of learning that happens at the middle school has phenomenal things going on. But because every time they leave one pocket and move into a different pocket, different language is used, that, that transfer of knowledge doesn't tend to follow the student. So we want to work very hard on establishing a common vocabulary so that the students can start to transfer their knowledge through their, through their educational journey. We're also going to look at the impact of sharing the data reports with a subset of students and parents. And we will be looking at the opportunities available to us through various grades six through eight math programs that are available, again, to mainly provide some consistency and a foundation for the teachers to build on.
Excellent. I just want to talk a little bit about history on that one. When, when I first started in this position, which is now, I don't know, seven or so years ago, that was when Common Core Math was just coming out. And so we had decided as a district that we would follow the Common Core Math modules and, and base our instruction off of those modules, much many people around the state did. And I think what we're finding now is we did a really good job, did a lot of work with that. But now that we've had a little bit more turnover in our math department and, and time has kind of gone on, we're maybe not as, you know, strictly following some of those modules, and they've changed the test as well. So we really would like to have a math program that would allow, just as Ryan said, continuity from sixth to seventh to eighth grade and help really focus what we're doing in those grade levels more specifically.
Thank you. Yeah, I definitely have to say now that I've been in my position for a number of months and I've had the opportunity to see every teacher teach, we have phenomenal math teachers. And while we have phenomenal teachers across the board. And I really do think that once we address the issue of continuity between when students move teachers and in grades, I think we can see some, some really great results there. Next slide, please. In terms of our ELA goal, I do know that, you know, this, these initial numbers might not look wonderful, but I want to put them in context. So when the STAR assessment that our baseline is that when we administer the assessment, 44.9% of our students at the middle school are reading on grade level. And while that, of course, does not sound great, in, in the bigger picture, the national average is 34%. So even though this is absolutely not where we want to be in comparison to the national average, we, we still don't size up that, that poorly. But we do hope to be able to push that to 52% reading on grade level. And that number, we had a really hard time focusing on. But if you look at the fact that different groups of students aren't one grade level below, they're reading their multiple grade levels below their current grade level in reading, moving some students to reading on grade level is not something that is feasible in, in one school year. But in terms of our plan of action, well, we also do plan on using instructional coaching through our consultants, but also, and this applies to math as well, colleagues. So what, like I'd already said, one of the great things about the middle school is we have phenomenal educators. But I'm noticing that they don't know what happens outside of their silo. And I do believe that other teachers in the building can learn great deals from their other colleagues if they have the opportunity to have those learning experiences. So we are going to look at some peer instructional coaching amongst the teaching faculty so that they can share their expertise. This is one thing we have already started in terms of engaging our remote learners. We've had some teachers shadow other teachers that are doing great things in their virtual classroom. And we've definitely seen it already impacting our achievement. We do plan on resurrecting the Just Read It program and building on that and creating something that is similar that they want to call scribble-scrabble, which is fun for a middle school that has an independent writing component, because obviously, reading and writing are very closely tied. But in terms of where we're going to focus a lot of our ELA instruction and professional development on, for all content areas, is the ability for students to work on annotating texts. And that's not just in English, but for example, if you have a word problem in math class, how do you annotate that to make sure that your, your either correct or incorrect answer is not a mathematical issue? It, it sometimes it's a reading issue. And so those skills also go hand in hand. And that is a skill that can be used in every single subject area. And we do believe that if students get better at that skill by working on it over time in multiple subject areas, that we can move the building forward. Similar to math, we would like to share the data reports and establish common vocabulary. Linda Fonda, who is our shared librarian with the high school, is doing a really phenomenal job in a short period of time, doing inventories of our reading materials and making strides to diversify what we have available to our students and to our teachers. And that is something that we will be looking at doing through, throughout all the curricular materials in the building as well. Next slide.
Ryan, I'm sorry. Could you, could you go back to the math goal slide, please? Okay, um, I guess my question is, what percentage, uh, what percentage were we at grade level in math? As you did hear in English, the slide reflects in English.
That, so that, that. That so that that if if I. If I understand it correctly, isn't necessarily established at a grade level the same way that a reading level is. It's just mainly an overall score of of their content, knowledge and abilities. But I don't believe it's leveled the the same way to create a grade level equivalency.
Yeah, you don't tend to talk about math math in that way because. And I think because this is a national test, because different schools. Or different states even teach different things in math at different grades. It's not as easy to do, whereas there's a very well established in in reading across the country. Reading levels and and where you need to be at a certain age so that they just don't, it's 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 not the same measure, really.
It also gives us the opportunity to look at trends. So let's say an entire grade is really lacking in one area specifically to math. The math department will be able to look at that as a whole and say, okay, so maybe in sixth grade, we really should be focusing a little bit more on this to help our students when they get to seventh grade. So I think looking at it in a holistic point of view for the curriculum itself to help our students moving forward and then targeting specific areas where our students are lacking by groups. Is how you look at the math versus the reading level that you would look at for ELA.
Exactly, yep. That that does that help you, Sue?
Um, I'll I'll get there.
Okay.
So another way too to think about Sue is, I mean, so this the STAR reports. Can allow us to look at individual students and that's where they're looking at sharing their stat STAR math data reports with the individual student and really going through. You know, especially targeting our. You know, our students who maybe struggle in math a little bit more, you know, these are the areas that that you specifically need to work. But it's also as a math department looking at, as Megan was saying. Okay, sixth graders really need to work on, you know, number sense to pick a thing. And and so then the the sixth grade teachers can can look at their curriculum and see where they could put that in or where the reinforcement needs to come in. So it's, yeah, it's just looking at it in two different ways.
All right.
Yeah, that's a question. This is Camille.
Sure.
Good evening. Just curious about the number of students that are for the targeted subgroup. We know how many students were level one, level two in math and then the same thing in English.
For the particular subgroup, I do not have that data. With me this evening, it's definitely something we could look into and and get to.
Yeah, we we have looked at that, but I don't have the numbers sitting in front of me right now.
The reason why I'm asking is I can't imagine it's it's a large number. Of the school, but just thinking about looking at those individual students. Jolting down to see what the what they got, you know, what gaps is this as a as a way to go about it. It's a very, very whole group. But I'm just concerned that. We may not maybe missing the mark with the kids that were, you know, with the group of kids that were targeted. Old data, but just kind of to see if that shows any trends that might inform us as well.
Absolutely. And I I do think it's important to look at the data that caused us getting cited. But at the same time, a lot of those students are no longer in the middle school. So we kind of decided to take the approach of let's look at the kids that are in front of us today. And where where do they fall and how can we move them forward? But absolutely, if if you look at the the individual breakdown of numbers from the time that we were targeted. Yes, it would probably be slightly different.
So along that, along that note. Where are, where, how is this subgroup doing in the middle school currently? Are they on grade level? You know, average, are they below grade level? I think one of the things with these plans that we have questions about is they're always teacher heavy. Like when I look at these common vocabulary among professionals to be shared. The data reports. Are going to be shared by staff. There's targeted professional development. There's more math program exploration. What are the students in that subgroup receiving? Are they going to be getting more time? Are they assigned to an additional math lab? I think that's, I try to look for in these plans what the students are going to be receiving.
And I do think that's where, is my son on? That's where the sharing of that STAR math data with the student as well, because we've done a lot of, again, sharing among teachers and all of that, but. In this case. It's sitting down with the students so that they have a better understanding of where they are in math and and looking at those. And so, yes, that's part of what will be used in their AIS math programs. Because that is work or, you know, very often the students are put into that extra section of of math AIS. So and and this is the the data that we have to go on, including the best math benchmark as well. Which gives us a different set of data and of course their daily math work with their teachers.
Yeah. So as a as a follow up, it might be helpful for the board just to know. Given this population currently in the middle school, where where do they fall? And it could be a, you know, a a general percentage, but are they on grade level, below grade level, above grade level? This way you're not churning out the same result, you know, each year. How do you break that cycle? That's that's the challenge. Thank you.
Understood. Okay. So for our next three goals, one of which is a survey goal. And the other two are school selected. We we decided to focus all three goals on tenant survey number six. So the staff and faculty had say are, yeah, six different surveys that they had to fill out. They were multiple pages long and we decided to focus our efforts on tenant six for a couple of reasons. One, overall, it was the tenant that we tended to to score the lowest on. But also it was the tenant where. Because it was so encompassing of many different topic areas. It seemed if we focus on tenant six, the other tenants will have to improve as well. So it it seems that by focusing our efforts here, it would have lasting impacts on the other tenants. So the first. Goal that we have according to the survey is related to the programs and activities to engage families. In in student achievement. So a lot of tenant six focuses on the aspects of schooling where parents are partners. And that is an area that has come across loud and clear that we need to do better on. We need to make parents at the middle school partners in the student's education. So the individual questions that fall under the section that we would like to address in this goal are all listed out there for you. And the way that the tenant surveys work is there were four ratings, two of which fell under a overall category of not doing. And two that fell under a category of doing. And the doing it category or doing this category consisted of that we've started the work or it is something that we already do. And so for the questions that you see listed there. Only twenty nine percent of our staff and faculty feel that we are doing this. And we do believe that we should be able to make great strides. This year and move to seventy seventy five percent of participants saying that we are doing this. Some of these actions in our action plan, we've already started started in September, knowing that we needed to do some of this work. So one of the things that we would like to do is parents as partners events. And this can take many different forms. Right now it would obviously be virtual, but things around. Having online activities where parents can learn how to check grades, what's the difference between Schoology? And school tool, how how do you know if your kid actually did their homework? How do you use a Chromebook? Some people don't know how to use a Chromebook. But also sometimes we send out information and data to to parents on their child's achievement. But not all parents know what that data means. So working with parents on what does it actually mean? When we give you this information or give you these tools? And what can you be doing with your child to support what's happening in the school environment? And in order to plan those events, we are going to be soliciting feedback from the community in terms of what. Topic areas they feel would be most important. I've already established our monthly newsletter, but parent education around topics dealing. With their child's education, not just what's happening in the school or current events. I will also become a part of that newsletter as it outlines in the tenant. I've already started my bi-monthly coffee hour. You'll see in the principal's report that my last one was canceled because nobody signed up for it. So for my next one, I am going to kind of revamp it to hopefully increase participation and kind of. Test the waters for the parents as partners events by having them half structured. So so far they've just been in in open time with no set agenda. Where parents can just come and talk or ask questions or discuss what's going on. But with everyone's busy schedule, we we want them to see that there is buy in for everyone. So I'm going to start having a topic that will be a topic of discussion. For half of it and then the the other half will just be the open dialogue question and answer about anything. I'm hoping that that will help to improve that that avenue because our first one was very successful. We are looking at revamping our orientation programs for all students and notice that says all students because. Every year, students do, even though they're in the same building, have a different educational experience. So we are going to look at how we can better orient our students to what will be coming. To their learning experience, to their educational experience each year, as well as looking at our overall. Program to support incoming fifth graders transitioning to the sixth grade. Lastly, something that the team is very excited about is looking at a school-wide positivity project. Looking that over time, coming up with something very visible where the the students and various community members can share what they love about Highland. Because overall, if people feel great about their community, they will want to be more involved. And all of those parents as partner events will hopefully be better received. Next slide. For our first school identified goal, again, we're still looking at tenant. Tenant six, but this one focuses on informative school communications. And you'll see that these goals build upon each other in that. Some of the actions in a previous goal definitely support that goal. But again, the reason we selected tenant six is tenant six does support all other tenants. So it just seemed to make sense for us. So in addition to the things that we already said during the survey goal, in terms of improving our school communications. We would like to look into the feasibility of asking parents a preferred communication method. Figuring out if there's some way that we can designate that so that we utilize the communication tools. Where we are most likely to be able to partner with that parent. And the staff and faculty definitely are very interested in meeting more with Dr. LeBlanc. To get information on that he's received from our community on on how to move forward with that. And for this particular goal. Our goal is that sixty percent of the building will choose one of the two options under the doing this category. And one of the side notes for me is we do a lot of this, but what I've realized is we don't always share what we do. We don't always, one hand doesn't know what the other hand is doing. And so in in general, if the staff and faculty are better informed about what's going on, that should definitely help as well. Next slide. And our third, or sorry, our second school identified goal, which is our third tenant six survey is around. Addressing the issues of racism, which of course is very important to. Not only the whole community, but the fact that the subgroup we're identified for is African American and black students. So. It definitely feels that this would be appropriate. Right now. We have seventy, sorry, sixty seven percent feel that we're doing the majority of this tenant. And we do hope to be able to move that to eighty percent over time. The other thing is that Dr. LeBlanc did begin some of his work before this survey was given out. And so we we do think that that sixty seven percent probably would have been a little bit lower. Had we not started some of this work at the beginning of the school year. But additional action plans, I know that Ms. Dudley Lemic has been working very hard on this and we look forward to. Utilizing NYU's culturally responsive scorecard to review our curriculum and figure out how to best move forward. Also instructional coaching with Dr. LeBlanc and professional development on culturally responsive practices. We will be soon establishing a building level equity committee to look deeper at. These topics specifically to the middle school. And one of the things that will definitely help guide that work is our school climate survey that will be conducted very soon. Does anyone have any questions for either myself or Mrs. Coburn? We look forward to your feedback. Okay, next slide.
All right.
So moving forward. All right. So moving to the elementary school.
Okay, so my committee consist of my grade level coordinators, my special education coordinators, my AIS reading and math coordinators. As you are aware, this process is something that we have been working on for years. At the elementary level, we were a school in need of improvement for students with disabilities years ago. So my staff is is used to doing these. Surveys and I want to thank them and my grade level coordinators for going through and. Really digging deep into that data and pulling out some goals that you'll see later in the in the slides. That really target some of the areas where the folks feel that we need to. You know, make some deeper. Attentions, so to speak. So starting with ELA. I put on here the the data that put us on the plan. So for our Black and African American students in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. There were twenty two students in the subgroup spread over grades three through five. Eighteen of those students took the test and unfortunately sixteen of those students fell at a one or a two. Most were at the two level, but we did have some ones in that in that group as well. That was pretty alarming to see that that number of students did not. Stretch into the the three and four range. When we looked back at the data and we put names to these numbers. We did notice that there were some students that on benchmarks. Typically scored higher, they were in the three and the four range, but those were some of the students that didn't take the test. But. I fear saying that because I don't want that to be an excuse for our building to not. Focus on a group that we've been identified for. So. One of the things that using that state data that was alarming was the number of students in that, yes, it's a small cohort subgroup. But the number of students that did not perform, but also looking at just the the students that didn't take the test. So our goal obviously would be to have a hundred percent of those students participate in the next assessment. Unfortunately, we don't have assessment results from last spring to compare to. So. If we get assessment results, we'll be able to compare this school year. But as Mrs. Dudley Lemic mentioned, the state did apply for a waiver. And there may not be a chance to look at that data. But I felt it was important to have that data listed there so that it it doesn't fall off of our radar. And I want to apologize down on the bottom of this slide, we did not put in our, nope, go back. Oh, one more. I think it's on a lag. There it is.
Right? No, one more.
Nope. You were right before with, I want to see the 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 bottom of the ELA data. You have to go back.
There we go. Right there, right?
There we go. It's just it's a lag. I noticed that when Ryan was going through. So in the actual packet that we sent to every board member, there are color-coded charts that you can refer to, but basically we looked at the two thousand eighteen nineteen Dibbles data and students that performed in the yellow and red area, those were those were the two lower performance bands. And we noticed that our internal data, students did grow and ended up in the green and blue area of that data chart by the end of the school year. So we would like to see that same amount of growth at the end of this school year. Now, the difficult part with this school year as opposed to the twenty eighteen nineteen year is obviously, we know the amount of contact time. Now, we still are, we still are tracking students, we're still testing students, we're still having AIS reading and math groups. But they do look a little different because they are not in person. But we felt that we still would see a growth from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. We'd like to see a larger percentage of increase from what we saw in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. But as Mr. Judge had mentioned, most of the students that were on this particular test are now at the middle school. We do know the names of those students and we are able to track those. And Mr. Darling is the IST coordinator. And any child that falls below the benchmark is on his radar. And that is where the team meetings happen on a regular basis to to track the the growth that those students are making. So that's for ELA. Now, we're going to go to our next slide. And Mr. Darling is actually going to take over and talk about our action plan.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to preface this first by saying that the last hour of this meeting, my house has been silent. And now it's our segment and bath time for my son. So I apologize in advance if you hear any background noise. But I would encourage community members, because you weren't provided with the finalized plan at this point. Once it's posted to the website, I would encourage any community members to to take a look at the full plan. Because this is really a condensed version of our action plan at this point. And it's just, you know, it's here for this presentation to give you a glimpse at some of the things that are going on this year and will be put in place for the spring to address, you know, this, the Black and African American subgroup and all students as Mr. Freer referenced. So for ELA, not to touch on everything here, but reading specialists primarily at this point. They've been extremely innovative in terms of adapting to the challenges of, you know, twenty twenty-one. So still utilizing some of those benchmark assessments that we've used in the past like Dibbles. But to take beginning of year data, that looked a lot different this year because for the first month of school, we didn't have, we didn't have students in person. And with that being said, we didn't want to wait to get a pulse check on where everybody was at until students came back in mid-October. So they were able to put a digital benchmark system in place during September. You know, so they've, we just wanted to give them a shout out for the work and diligence that they've that they've provided so far this year. And I think that that work will provide us with a good baseline for tracking our progress moving forward. Some of the other things that have been put in place at the building level, specifically with instructional support team. So that's made up of our specialists, reading specialists, special educators, myself, special education coordinators and counselors within the building. And so we've really tried to adapt that team to have an equity lens. And I think everybody is of the same mindset that at this point, within this school year and in the bigger picture, you know, really trying to take a look at not just a deficit mindset in terms of how far students are behind, but really to be to target skills and to try to get as much growth out of students as we possibly can in the time that we have them in the building and not fall back on some of the external factors that we see hindering students by not being in the building as much. And then from there, the district was able to purchase Teachers College Digital Resource Library, which has been a real asset so far this year, both for teachers when students are in the classroom, as well as as well as while students are asynchronous on their at-home day. So they're able to provide links to Teachers College specialists doing some of the lessons that are done in class. And that gives students an opportunity to be re-taught that same skill on their at-home day. Teachers are able to provide those videos to certain subgroups of students on CSO or, you know, smaller groups of students so that they can be, you know, so that they can differentiate that learning for their for the students in their class. And additionally, some of the things that People Personnel Services has been able to allocate funding for special class reading teachers to and the district as a whole has been able to do that to to get them some Orton-Gillingham training, which is a research-based multisensory approach to target, you know, foundational reading skills. And so again, that's something that is going to to positively impact the growth of all students in the building. But we can, we can kind of drill down with some of the data that we have in terms of Dibbles and previous state test scores and things like that. And our Funtas and Pennell assessments to to take a look at, a closer look at really the handful of students that we have currently in the subgroup. And then finally, the last thing I wanted to touch on in terms of the action plan is recently, the district was able to allow Jill Berger, a fourth grade teacher and myself, to participate in a pretty extensive Teachers College Institute called Black History is American History. And so that really, I mean, first of all, it it helps us target the Black or African American student subgroup in ELA. But it also lines up pretty nicely with the Equity Initiative and the District Diversity and Inclusivity Committee. And so we've been trying to spread that information across the building as as somewhat of a turnkey. So things, you know, that came out of that, for example, were us gathering knowledge about the Own Voices Movement, which is basically a national movement for students to read texts written by somebody, you know, in in their own voice, somebody who experienced that historical event themselves and not a book that was written by a historian, but really through the lens of the person that experienced it. So that's, you know, a hashtag that we're trying to, you know, push out to the teachers so that we can incorporate as many of those books in the classroom as possible. And then also that institute provided us with some frameworks for inclusivity that are research-based things, questions like, you know, when teachers are choosing their curricular materials, questions like where are the black people at this time in history? And things like that that can help drive some of their, some of the process for choosing appropriate materials in the classroom.
Just if I can add real quick, that was an opportunity that came to us on pretty short notice. I think what, Matt, we had about a week to get everything together and 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 it was
If that, yeah.
It was for three Saturdays. So we're very much hoping that Teachers College will offer this opportunity again. And that will have a little bit more notice about it so that we can encourage more of our teachers to participate in the program as well. But it definitely sounds like it was a worthwhile investment.
Okay, so now we move on to our math goal again. At the top of the slide, you'll notice the subgroup, there were twenty-three students in the subgroup. And seventeen of those students took the test. Thirteen of those students performed in the category of one or two. So we did a little bit better in that area. But again, still an area that we need to focus upon. So obviously, we'd like to have a hundred percent of our students take that math assessment. And we would like to see at least a twenty percent growth in that subgroup the next time that assessment is given. Now, Mr. Darling will speak a little bit more about our benchmarks. But similarly to Mr. Judge, the benchmarks that we used are not necessarily grade level benchmark. They're done at a grade level, but they're hard to compare from beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of year because they're content-specific. So the first benchmark may have, you know, four units, so to speak, involved in that benchmark. The next benchmark would be other units because math is something that builds upon itself. So what we did was we took the all of the assessments that were given, the benchmarks, and those are our local benchmarks. What that, what we gave in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and we did a, an average across the building so that we have a base number of seventy-nine percent proficient. We'd like to see that number grow as we move forward with these benchmarks. Now, the difficult piece again is that benchmarks are given a little bit differently this year. So we may not be comparing apples to oranges because it may have taken longer to get through some units because of the FaceTime. But it's still going to be data that we're going to be able to look at and again, drill down. We know those students that were in that subgroup. Again, two of those grade levels are currently sixth and seventh graders. But again, we never take our eye off of any group. And as we've mentioned in prior years, when we were noted for students with disabilities, we know that all of that data that comes back from state assessments, whether we hit the number of students that can be, make up a subgroup. So for instance, ELL students, we know that our ELL students need some support. We don't have enough in that cohort to be identified on a state report card, but that is work that we are doing through our ELL department. So our math benchmarks, we would like to see those on average across the building raised by three percent in this coming school year. Mr. Darling will move over now to talk about our action plan for math.
All right. So similarly to ELA, these are a few of the things that we currently have in place or are going to put in place for the spring to to target the goals that Mr. Freer mentioned. One of the things that we're most excited about at this point is piloting a math fact fluency program called Reflex. And so that's a fact fluency program, a computer-based program for grades two through five. And we felt as a team that math facts, specifically, you know, during the pandemic right now are are some of the things that are going to be taking the biggest hit just because students, you know, really benefit from having that time in person to master those facts. And while they're at home, we know that a lot of them on those asynchronous days aren't putting in the, you know, the thirty or forty minutes that they would be doing in the presence of their teacher in school. So we really want to try to put something in place to target that as we transition back to a typical school year, hopefully next, you know, next year. And so right now, that's being utilized by the AIS math department. And then they're going to provide feedback and we're going to take a look at some of the growth that they see among our AIS students this spring using that program. And then we can make a decision moving forward about whether it would be beneficial to purchase for the building wide and utilize with all grade two through grade five students, or whether we want to take a look at a different program. Aside from that, there there will definitely be a focus on incorporating tier-three math vocabulary. Research has shown that by targeting that within math instruction, it it improves student performance. And again, that's, you know, these are things that we can focus in on on our Black and African American subgroup. But by doing them with fidelity, it's going to positively impact all students across the board. And then Joel mentioned taking a look at the benchmark assessments, and this one's down at the bottom of this slide. And basically using those benchmark assessments that take place four times a year, taking a look at that data and disaggregating it to determine where the, you know, where the gaps are forming. What are the things that we need to target specifically in, you know, within the grade? And then, you know, using those moving forward into next year in terms of sharing that information with the next grade level to make sure that they they know what the students, what foundational skills the students might be weaker in than they have in years past and things like that. And then in addition to that, if we're seeing students that, you know, need enrichment because they, because they're scoring close to a one hundred on the benchmark, then that also offers us with opportunities to to further challenge, you know, and and provide more rigorous, rigorous instruction to those students.
Okay, so now we can move into our survey goal. And our survey goal ties in nicely with the work being done with the Equity Committee. So incorporating resources that expose students to diverse cultures, beliefs and backgrounds. That was the the premise of the survey question. Now, six percent of the faculty and staff felt that this was not in place. And in comparison to other survey questions, this one actually scored quite low. But because of the work that we're doing as a district, we felt that this was one that we needed to include because it does, the work that we do at the elementary level will have positive impact on students for years to come, and we are the first in line to make sure that that initiative is supported across the board. So we did use this as an opportunity to write this into our plan. We will have a survey that is conducted near the end of this school year with the expectation. I I would love to have a hundred percent of my staff know that this is in place and that we will continue to work on that. And so that is our target for this, for this coming year. So we'd like to at least decrease that by the end of this school year by one to two percent. Again, it's a small number of teachers and it might just be that we were not clear on some of the things that we were doing. When we surveyed our staff, we didn't just survey the classroom and the 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 teaching staff, we had everyone in the building take part. So there may be people in the building that are not aware that things are happening, but we feel that it's important as a school that everyone knows what's going on in this area so that we can close gaps for the targeted subgroup, but also to make it a more inclusive school overall. So, Mr. Darling, if you want to talk a little bit about the plan there on the bottom.
Just one, I I just wanted to add too, in the interviews that I did with faculty, but also with students at the middle school, you know, they also indicated that they would like to see more of this kind of work. And so, you know, that really informed the decisions that we made, both at the middle school well level as well as at the elementary school level.
Then just going into the plan in terms of our action plan to address the survey goal. Oh, Sarah, would you mind going back? We were able to fit Thank you. Sorry about that. So I mean, one of the things that the district has been able to do over this last summer was allocate funds for, you know, representative literature in terms of revamping some of the classroom libraries and making sure they're up to date with with, you know, the newest editions of books and the most representative literature we could find. And it was actually good to see that at that TC Institute I mentioned before, they offered a lot of recommendations for for kind of cutting-edge books. And a lot of those titles that they shared were things that the district had purchased over the summer. So that was nice to see that a lot of the teachers, you know, were moving in the right direction in that sense in terms of having an inclusive library. Another thing that, you know, we'll continue to do is work with the consultant from Ulster Boses. That's Kathy Simpson, and she's done a really nice job this year in terms of her flexibility and working with teachers. And we've been clear with her that we'd like to incorporate diversity and cultural culturally responsive teaching as much into her TC professional development as we possibly can. So she's, she's been incorporating a lot of those, a lot of those ideas as well with teachers in her work with them. And then finally, continually using Dr. Jessel Block, you know, on the days that he's here to this most recent cycle that he was here, he was able to meet with all of our grade levels and have some in-depth conversations with them about their perspectives, you know, and follow up with some of the conversations that they had started in previous sessions. So I think, you know, continuing with that work across the building. And as Joel mentioned, six percent doesn't seem that high in terms of what you would expect for a, for a, a survey goal here. But, you know, because this is such an important initiative, we just felt strongly that we really want But, you know, because this is such an important initiative, we just felt strongly that we really want a hundred percent of the, of the staff and faculty in the building to be aware of, of this as a, an initiative and a best practice, um, that, you know, everyone is striving towards.
Okay, our next school in, initial, or identified goal is uh in the area of social emotional learning. Um, twenty percent of our faculty and staff indicated that um, there needs to be some work in monitoring our large group settings such as recess and cafeteria. Um, so we would like to um put some things in place and see that this um this percentage of, of faculty and staff uh drops by at least five to ten percent by the end of this school year. Now, the interesting piece about this is uh currently our recess monitors, first of all, um, many of them have left us and moved on. And um, so we're down to just a, a handful. Um, because of the pandemic, we are not having outdoor recess during the lunch and recess period because of the amount of time that it takes for children to uh, to get through the lunch period within their classrooms. So um, we're not really positive that this is something that we will be able to fill, fulfill by June. Um, but we will be um making sure that this is something that is in place and trainings for any new hires, which there should be um, a number of them when we get back to full capacity for the fall. So if Mr. Darling, you want to talk a little bit about those webinars?
Yeah, and so this goal really, um, like Joel said, it, it's specifically um cafeteria monitors and some of the other staff around the building that have, have historically had less access to trainings of this nature. Um, and as a result, schools nationwide have seen disciplinary practices, um, sometimes be disproportionate among certain subgroups. So we just wanted to really be uh purposeful in some of the professional development opportunities that we're choosing for, um, for those staff members. Um, so one of the, one of the things that we found, and there are a number of different resources out there, um, but there's ed web training webinars um, that we'll be able to set up, whether it's um the spring or, or over the summer. Um, and target some of the social emotional learning, uh, and then also trauma-informed practices uh for, you know, for all of our staff. Um, and just on that note, I mean, Mr. Freer had mentioned that, you know, we've, we've typically, um, I mean, we haven't seen many discipline issues um, that this training would apply to this year because the lunches are in the cafeteria. Or excuse me, lunches are in the classroom as opposed to the cafeteria. Um, but one thing, when, when I was doing a lunch duty the other day and talking with one of the students, um, that I thought you might enjoy to hear the story is you know, we kind of have small chat throughout the lunch period, um, and I, I try to incorporate, you know, asking them about how they're feeling this year, all those social emotional pieces. And one of the students actually mentioned that she's enjoying this year um more than any other year because she's had an opportunity to come out of her shell and, and uh she's been more social than she ever has in the past. Um, because she's in a much smaller classroom setting, you know, in lunch, there isn't a hundred other kids in her lunch period. She's sitting with her class, um, she's been able to, to bond with her lunch monitor more than she has in the past. So just some, just a small pro that I think is a takeaway um from this year that I thought you would enjoy hearing. And uh, I think that's about it for this one, so thank you, Sarah.
Okay, and then our last one, as Sarah mentioned at the uh beginning of the presentation, we can look at chronic absenteeism. Now, we are not noted in any category for chronic absenteeism, but our absenteeism is slightly higher um with this subgroup than we would like it to be. We would like it to be in line with the building absenteeism. Um, and you're going to see later when we talk about attendance and we have the initiative that, um, well, it's an ongoing initiative of our outreach and engagement practices. Um, attendance at the elementary level isn't always related to students not wanting to take part. Um, it sometimes is an adult issue, um, you know, students, um, when they're in school, they seem to engage and they want to be there. Um, so one of the things that we need to make sure that we're addressing across the board in every subgroup um, is getting students to school. Um, now, with that said, and we're going to mention this later, we also don't want students coming to school if they're not feeling well. So um, if there's a fever or anything of that nature, we want them to stay home. We do not believe that that will feed a chronic absenteeism rate. Um, but obviously, we want children to be healthy and um not impact others in the building. But as we noted in the twenty eighteen nineteen year, uh, this, the targeted group uh of black and African American students was at sixteen point two percent of their absences were chronically absent students. Um, we would like to see at the end of this school year it to be more in line with the overall building, which is around fifteen percent um of the absences. And then we looked at, because we want to make sure that we're doing uh attendance uh routines for all students. We looked at our absenteeism rate in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And we would, we're going to shoot for trying to uh decrease that by two percent. And you'll see in the data that you're going to see later, we are already uh exceeding that by quite a bit. Um, so the, the data that you'll see in a little while is actually quite interesting to see that we are about half of the fifteen percent at the current time of this school year. So, Mr. Darling, if you want to talk a little bit about the, the plan?
Yes, yeah, so the action plan for this one, as Joel mentioned, um, it's actually one of the other presentations tonight in terms of interventions that are already in place for um attendance and engagement or participation. Um, so you'll, you'll hear more specifics there. But overall, um, basically having, having specific um people within the building take a, take a regular look at patterns of attendance. And then having flags, um, you know, to make sure that we're not letting students slip through the gaps at all. Make sure that, um, you know, nobody's flying under the radar in terms of accruing a cer-, you know, a certain number of days that would make them chronic um throughout the school year. And then rewarding or not rewarding, but um reinforcing with positive um positive practices when students make changes in their attendance patterns or, you know, are coming to school and, and really make them want to come to school on those in-person days. Um, so again, that's something that we'll talk more about in uh, in the next presentation.
And before we just end, I do want to uh just thank Mr. Judge for, um, he actually set up this presentation with the template. So um, that was very handy for us to be able to slide our slides into his presentation. So uh, just to thank you to Mr. Judge for doing that.
Uh, so one thing that I didn't mention at the beginning is um, this plan is, is late. It, it should have been done in September. Um, but truthfully, we had so many other things that we were working on at that point in time that it just did not become the priority. However, we knew that this was work that needed to be done. So much of what is being shared in the plan is work that we already have been working on. We just didn't get it written into the plan. So um, so it's not that we're just going to be starting this work in February. It's, it's ongoing work. And so in some of it, um, talking about it, I, I just want people to understand that, that this isn't new things that we're going to be just putting in place right, right now. It is work that's going to, or has been ongoing um across the school year. But that is the plan, is there any questions? Um, either from what you read in the plans that we shared with you or from the presentation?
Sarah, if we, if the standardized testing are canceled again, that's going to uh put us two years in a row with no testing. Am I understanding it correctly that if this does happen, we are going to be relying on star assessments?
Well, we have, we have many assessments that we use. Um, the middle school uses the star assessment, we do not do that at the elementary school. We have our benchmark assessments for math, we have the DIBELS uh assessments for reading as well as the normal assessments, you know, from, from grade level um teachers. Um, so yes, there's many different, different uh data points that we'll be able to look at.
And all, and all of those methods, they compare against other peer groups uh in other districts or other states, no?
The star assessment does, the benchmark assessment is an internal um assessment, so that's something that we've created within Highlands, so it's harder to do that. Um, what we have been able to do since it's in, it has been in place for several years now is we can look at it across several years. So we can look at, all right, here's how third graders have done for the last four years on this assessment. And we can be looking at, okay, is this better or worse than other years? Um, but no, that is not a national or a statewide assessment.
Okay.
The DIBELS, however, the DIBELS reading is, that's a nationwide program. That's the ELA work.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah, along those lines, if we don't have data for two years, I mean, what is, what does it take to get out of this categorization? I'm assuming another round of, of testing, right?
I'm not really sure, to tell you the truth, Heather. Um, um, it, you know, the whole system is designed for the state assessments because it's, it's actually a federal requirement. Um, you know, this, each state has their own individual plan for it, but this is a federal um accountability system. So um, you know, it was designed to have tests. When there's no test to have, we're not really sure how they will move that forward. But it does require that you have some internal measures so that you can, um, you know, you can look at making some kind of progress. So um, so, you know, we can, we can.
Sarah, if I could jump in, because
Sure.
Um, Sarah Dudley Lemick, myself and uh Patrick Boyd attended a session last February, just before we closed and just before they canceled the state assessments. Um, and one of the things that they said during that um program is that schools that are identified would remain identified in an area until those assessments um basically took you off of that role. And we've seen that in prior years when um, if you remember, participation rate, that was one of the ones, we didn't necessarily get dinged for it, but we could have. And they kept you on the list for multiple years. So, you know, that it's definitely a concern, um, we want the children to take the tests, but I sort of want apples and apples compared and not apples and oranges. And I do think that having um, you know, less face time, we will see different results on those tests. So um, I'm looking forward to a full year of, of in-person learning to compare data to data. But obviously, we will still extrapolate out as much as we can. Um, but we may not come off of a list, and that was something that was warned about back then.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think that's a very good point, Joel, just in terms of wanting apples to apples and not apples to oranges, because there could be a very big difference.
But the one thing that I will say is whether it's state data, a star assessment data, benchmark data, AIS data, it is reviewed on a regular basis. So we know students that are struggling, that's what our instructional support teams are put in place to, to track that. Um, and to put interventions into place as part of the RTI process. And so um, you know, those things will continue, whether we have something from the state or the federal government that says that we're on a list, we're off a list, we're in good standing, we're not in good standing, whatever they decide. Um, we're going to continue to react to our, the local need of our local student.
Right.
Yeah, and I, I definitely think, you know, as we look into whatever happens with the test this year, um, even going into next year, there's already conversation about what will the measure be? I mean, it's not really fair to measure students on a standard um from three years ago. If we know that students did not get as much face-to-face time and one-on-one time. So um, you know, that, that's not only state, but national conversation that's happening right now about, okay, so we know we're going to go into September with students not where they were before. So, you know, where are we going to make that line? And, and how are we going to measure that progress going forward? The thing that's very encouraging to me when I've, when I spoke with um individual teachers as well as grade levels, uh, you know, they're pleasantly surprised by the growth that students are showing. So when they're doing their DIBELS evaluations or their um, you know, reading level evaluations or their math uh assessments, they are seeing that students are, are learning, they're, they are moving forward. Are they moving as forward as quickly as they were in the past? Maybe not, but it's not that, you know, that this, you know, I keep seeing articles or, or headlines, I think I would say more than articles. I keep seeing headlines about this being a lost year, and I, I don't, I don't believe that to be accurate. I think our students are learning a lot. I think that there's some, maybe some immeasurable things that they're learning as well, like perseverance and um, you know, uh, uh, social emotional things that they're learning. So um, I, I, I think it'll be interesting to see what happens as we move forward um as a country, talking about education and, and assessment too.
Two other questions that I have, Sarah, you had mentioned that this plan is late. Does that have any ramifications for the district?
No, no.
Okay, so we've been working on it all along, so that's not of a concern and there's no other.
Alone with that, um, most of the county is, have either submitted theirs last month or this month.
Okay, and then uh, the only other question I have is I know these are planned specific to each school. Um, the, the middle school and then the elementary school. And I guess just the one thing that I didn't hear, and, and maybe it's just because of the way it was structured based on, on school, is you know, we have a lot of kids that, you know, that were in this subgroup at the time that we were identified as um needing improvement, but they have moved on now. But when we talk about that, they're still within our educational system, right? We just have moved from the elementary school to the middle school or from the middle school to the high school. I understand that the assessments are different at the high school, but we still have those students. Are we making sure that that data and that knowledge is kind of transferred from school to school? So those children are still kind of provided with the help that they need?
We have a tracking sheet that starts at the elementary school that, that goes with the student in a folder to the middle school. So they are able to see where the children were as the years uh went on, whether it's state assessment data or um benchmark assessment data. So there, that information is there, um, and it does move on from grade level to grade level to the middle school.
And, and that's also work that Karen has done to, um, you know, she, she definitely has created spreadsheets on students going year by year to, to track their, their growth in there, um, or not, depending on the situation, um, moving forward. So yes, it's, it's definitely work that we're doing. And, you know, as we've stated in the past, the thing that is always kind of interesting to us is we're cited at the elementary and middle school level, and then they get to high school and our students do pretty well. Um, so, you know, we, we must be doing something right in, in this whole process because our graduation rates are high and our success rate on those exams are, are good as well.
But we don't have, I guess my only concern, and, and maybe it's not a concern, maybe I just don't know about enough about the overall process. Do we have that breakdown done kind of in the, and the, at the high school level as well? Kind of the, the cohorts, you know, that we're being cited for, is that also reviewed in that, at that level at the high school?
There definitely is work that happens from the eighth grade into the ninth grade. Um, the thing that happens once you get into the high school is it, people segment, or students kind of segment off and the material is a little bit more siloed than it is um at the elementary and middle school level too. So there is information that is shared. Um, and there definitely is information from an ELA level that's, that's moving up, you know, reading levels and um that kind of thing. Definitely, um, Karen has done quite a bit of work at the high school with the math teachers at the high school, looking at um either both the individual work that we talked about, looking at individual students, but also looking at, okay, this was the results of our Algebra One Regents exam last year. These are the areas that, you know, across the board, our students aren't doing as well in. So, you know, we need to use those to, to look at our curriculum and, and figure out where we can um modify that to address those issues.
Okay, I guess the high school, I would just encourage maybe even just that, looking at that cohort as well, just to make sure that we are continuing, you know, work in that area to make sure that we're continuing improvement.
Absolutely. Camille, I thought you had your hand up a while ago, I'm only seeing a few people at a time, but.
I just echo kind of this, this kind of similar concern, um, as Heather, just making sure like, we, mere interventions, um, but they're still very whole group. And the, the gap that exists, so like in elementary, the ELA, um, you know, eleven percent proficiency for black students and thirty percent for, for white students. That's a gap. We give it the same thing to the same, you know, to everybody, those gaps are still going to be there, so we may see that positive. We give it the same thing to the same, you know, to everybody. Those gaps are still going to be there. So we may see that positive growth, you know, for both groups, but the gap is still going to be there. So just kind of, I'm hoping that we see some more targeted supports, both at the elementary and middle school for our, our black students that are, that, that we realize that are, are not proficient. So we have the benchmark data that we're using. And they started the middle school. So in absence of status and which probably won't happen this year, we, we can all, we're shaking our heads on that one, but just thinking that we have to be mindful that we're giving more and be more mindful of the supports that we're giving. That's kind of my, um, I'm just concerned that those gaps are still going to be there, even if the, even as things improve, the gap's going to be there. Just how do we close that gap instead of increasing, you know, the, how, because the gap is there?
Anyone else? Okay. We have one more presentation for you, at least in this segment of the, of the meeting. I'm going to share again. Find the right one. Not seeing it on my board. One update. You're not seeing that, are you?
No.
There it is. Okay, hopefully we can go through this one maybe a little more quickly.
But so as this, the dilemma is pulling this up, you know, you know, Sue Gilmore had reached out to us and asked us, you know, she'd seen the presentation, I believe, either at Bosse's or the Ultra County School Boards, I forget which one, but just talking about, you know, attend, attendance, engagement, and what are we doing to support students? So, you know, one thing I have to say that we are extr, you know, one of the many things we're extremely good at, at Highland, is making those connections. It's all about relationships and at each level, you know, we are giving incredible support on a day-to-day basis to, to students and especially during these difficult times. You know, we are doing a lot of reaching out on many levels. So that's what this presentation talks about. And we did kind of condense a little bit. So, you know, you'll see when we talk about some of the things we do for engagement, it's, these are happening in all the buildings. So, pass it back over to Mrs. Dudley Lemick.
Okay, so again, I think this should go a little bit faster and we, we just wanted to give you an idea of where the attendance was this year. And, and as you can see, across the board, our attendance levels are, are pretty high. We're in the mid nineties on a, on a daily basis with our students. At the elementary school, this would be, you know, for our remote students, the students check in or the, the attendance is done once a day. But they're, you know, they're going in and out all day throughout the day. For the middle and high school, that attendance is being taken period by period and, and recorded. Chronic absenteeism would be greater than eight absences, generally speaking. Chronic absentee, that's up to this time. It was, I think, up to January 20th. Is that the date? Yeah, January 20th. So your, your rule of thumb is that you don't want a student to have more, miss, have missed more than 10% of the school day to be. If they're more than that, then it's chronically absent. So if you're looking across a school year, it's about 18 days because you're in school 180 days. So these numbers are, you know, they're not great, but they're not super high. Again, very often, these numbers are representing specific families. So at the elementary school, it's 7.7% of the student population, but that could be two or three families of students that we're continually working with. You know, because all three of their students that are in the building are absent on a regular basis. So, so anyway, you know, overall, that, that, those aren't bad numbers, especially during this school year of remote and hybrid and, and all of that. If you want to compare to last year, so that you have something to, to base it on, again, if you look at 2019 versus 2020, each month, it's pretty comparable in some, you know, in some ways, it's better. Very often, a few anomalies here and there. If you look at our chronic absenteeism at the elementary and middle school, it's actually better this year than it was last year at this time. I think part of that is the, the remote options. You know, students are more likely to log on maybe than they, than, you know, days when they might have stayed home. The high school is concerning. I think that we can talk about, about that a little, a little bit more as far as engagement goes, but that might come out a little bit in our, in our further presentation here. And then another question was just, you know, how are grades doing? How are students doing? And to me, this is about engagement. How connected are they when they do come to school, right? They're showing that where they're coming, whether it's remote or in person, but how are they doing when they get here? And if you look at semester one versus semester of last year versus semester one of this year, you'll notice that it's, you know, not significantly different in most grade levels. In fact, some grade levels are doing better with their, and, and that, that 86.5% is your, is your overall average, right? Ryan and Bill, you want to give me a little bit about where that number-
Yes, so those are the students' grade level averages for quarter one and quarter two. So if you take all the students' averages and average their averages, and then average the two quarters, that's, that's where that number comes from.
So the average for sixth grader semester one last year was 90.9%, and this year it's 86.5%. So, and then I have people covering the other block on my, on my screen. But again, it's similar. It's, it really is not a significant difference from the year before. Now, to help us improve on that and to make sure that we can get as many students in school as we can, we have a variety of interventions that we use, either to get our students here or once they're here to keep them engaged. And I'm going to hand it over to my building level people to talk about those.
So when we look at attendance and engagement interventions, we, we did these by building and then we put them together because many of the things that we were doing in, in one building, we, we've been talking about this for a while. We then started doing some of those same, same things in other buildings. So we felt that it was important that we line this up so that you see all of the things that are being done across the district. So, obviously, we know our teachers are first line of defense and the communication that they have with students and families is paramount to making sure that engagement stays high and students come to school or log on if they're in a remote setting. And then tracking that contact and, you know, we have access through our school management system that we can put notes in that can be shared between teachers at the secondary level. If a, a math teacher is having difficulty and having a kid come to school, they could have those conversations with each other, but they can also put notes into the school management system so that we keep record of contacts that were being made with families. And then the adult interaction, those spreadsheets are, you know, teachers are monitoring, the support staff is helping out, our guidance counselors and our mental health interactions with students have been paramount this year. We have had many more visits to homes than we've had in prior years, and that's primarily because we can get out of the buildings a little bit easier to go to homes to check on, on students if we need to, because we don't necessarily have a full, a, a full building of students that needs our attention all day long. And unfortunately, some of those home visits do require some referrals to county and state services, and that's happening at all levels. And as Sarah mentioned in one of the other presentations, we, we have some, some families that we know need support and they're on our radar for, and they may have been on our radar since elementary school, going into high, middle school and high school. And those documents are all shared between the buildings and also the support services. Our guidance counselors and our social workers have conversations with one another to make sure that children are not falling through the cracks and having to learn a whole new, when they get to the next building, having to learn what those issues are for those children. I think it's important that those, we have in place the guidance counselors that work both in the middle school and the high school so that there's that transition from one to the next. But also at the elementary school, we have a psychologist and a social worker that spend some time in our building and some time in the middle school. So it, it creates that continuum across, across the building or across the district. Our check-in and check-out plans, that's part of our PBIS model. We use it quite a bit at the elementary level. We, we try to find somebody that a student relates to, have them check in with that person in the morning. Sometimes there's an incentive involved and then checking out at the end of the day where you get positive praise from that, that person to get you to come back the next day. And Jesse Smith, our, our occupational therapist, you may have remembered him when we went around to do the building tours. He's one of our, our lean-on people for check-in and check-out at the elementary school, and they have those same types of supports at the other buildings as well. And we can't say enough about the support that has been happening with our technology office, but also with our teachers, the administrators, secretarial staff, I think I mentioned it in my last board report, Ashley Carey in my office, she troubleshoots technology with parents all day long and she helps them get the devices that they need or transfers them onto the tech office. And Carol and her staff have been, you know, very helpful in making sure that students are never without a working device. So we're very appreciative of those efforts as well.
So one thing that, one of the things that I'm just, I really have loved about this school year and, and the ways that we have adjusted is, is really using our support staff folks in ways that we maybe didn't have the opportunity to do before. I think that our TAs, our aides, our monitors have been difference makers for many of our students who maybe felt a little bit more disengaged from an all-remote or from their, their at-home days. In, in all three buildings, this group of people have done a tremendous amount of work to keep our students connected to school. They are making phone calls, they're checking in on email, they're checking in on Schoology or Seesaw, they're making themselves available for virtual study halls when we're in all-remote modes. They really have, have done a tremendous amount of work to, to help our students. You know, they, this is over on the other side of academic, but they are doing some breakout rooms for targeted support with teachers. They, they've, they've really done a tremendous amount. And then, of course, our ENL teachers as well, keeping that connection going. And our, our very own translator, Patty Stephens, is in almost constant communication with families either by phone or by, via text messaging to, to make sure that these students don't get lost or fall through the cracks in this, this new learning environment that we have. And then again, a, a different type of support work, our guidance counselors, our psychologists, our social workers, they're making, you know, regular contact with students and families, depending on the developmental level of this, of the, the student, you know, ma, much of this work in getting students to school and engaging students is really about that connection with families, much like Ryan mentioned in, in the last presentation. The more families feel welcome and supported either in our schools or by our schools, the more likely they are to send their students to us and the more likely they are to support the work that we're asking them to do at home. So, you know, this, we really have seen so much work from this group of, of people this year. It's very, very much appreciated by, by families and students and by the district as well. And then, was it Matt? Maybe was going to talk about academic interventions?
Yeah, so, and I, Sarah, you mentioned some of them already. I mean, in terms of specific examples, I think, you know, across the three buildings, we've seen, for example, some students that have, we've been losing between either, you know, blocks of, learning blocks throughout the day or from ELA to their AIS period and things like that. So we've been able to put interventions in place such as specialists or counselors joining the original classroom teacher Zoom. And then that classroom teacher moving them to a breakout room with the student or group of students in there to really minimize, you know, the number of transitions that we're asking for students to complete throughout the day because, you know, the more, the more clicking and, and schedule management our students have to be, you know, take ownership of, the more students we, we lose for some of those things. In terms of check-ins and check-outs that Joel had mentioned, we've seen, we've seen a lot of benefit to modifying that from years past in terms of, you know, on the in-person day, the school psychologist might check, check out with that student. So they're checking out with them before they go home while we have them in person. And then the, the actual check-in could take place on their asynchronous day to say, you know, hey, how you doing? Do you understand all, all the assignments that you're responsible for today? Or if it's at the end of the day, they might say, you know, did you, did you get everything done? Share your screen with me and walk me through what you worked on today. So, you know, taking some of the things that have been done historically and modifying them to meet the needs of this new, you know, new challenging time. Some other things that have been put in place, I know Joel mentioned at the last meeting, setting alarms on, on iPads for students that, you know, maybe are in K one, two, even some of our sixth and seventh graders that are, might be at home alone or might be at home with, with grandma, who's not as tech-savvy as their parent may be, and trying to, trying to make it as easy and user-friendly as possible for students to access the curriculum and not rely on parents or, you know, you know, their support system too heavily and try to, try to build up students' responsibility and ownership over their own learning. And we have seen students that are all-remote, for example, and, you know, across all three buildings, their students that as soon as we saw the name for all-remote, we were worried because historically, they've been students that they need that or they thrive off that in-person learning. And we were worried that we may lose them. And I think, you know, it's been a win in that sense that some of those students are, it's up to themselves every day to sign on because they may not have the, the encouragement or support there every day at home with them. And they've overall or overwhelmingly done a really nice job of that, and that's something that we're proud of. So if there's anything I'm missing, feel free to chime in, anybody, but I think that's-
Maybe Ryan or Bill, you could talk about the office hours at the middle school or the high school?
Yes, of course. Good, good evening, everyone. At the high school, we have office hours whenever we have an all-remote schedule, which is every Wednesday or any time that we are all-remote. Every teacher has a 30-minute office hour block in the middle of the day that makes them accessible. And as I understand it, when I talk to teachers and I ask them about if students are accessing them and talking about it, it's very popular, actually. And this, many students do access their teachers during those office hours. Usually, it's only unfortunately, once a week on Wednesdays, but for the next 10 days, they'll have it every day, I, I will say, at the high school anyway, which is, which is a good thing. Something else I just, I'd like to point out, as you know, that students who, generally speaking, students who have attendance or engagement issues have a very specific set of circumstances, and we take it with a case-by-case basis. That said, generally speaking, at the high school level, our approach has been that we keep an attendance outreach document, an Excel spreadsheet that, to which all teachers and all councils and administrators have access. As was mentioned before, the teacher is the first line of defense and the teacher places, if a teacher or anyone realizes that there's an attendance issue or an engagement issue that needs to be addressed, the teacher places a phone call home to the parent and documents the call and puts notes on the Excel, Excel spreadsheet. If the student is still disengaged or has attendance issues, that's when Counselor Danielle Garcia intervenes or one of the other counselors by reaching out to support the student and our family and becomes a liaison and tries to- Or one of the other counselors, uh, by reaching out to support the student and our family and becomes a liaison and tries to. Develop a relationship to help get that student re-engaged and, and improve the attendance, um, to provide outreach and support. Um, I need to say that Ulster County preventative services has been very instrumental in taking several referrals. If the family agrees, preventative services offers counseling, parenting skills, training and referrals to community-based programs, which we noticed. Has helped re-engage students in their academics. And of course, like the other schools, when necessary, home visits are completed by, um, this year, they're completed by Danielle Garcia and Wade Sargent. And so far they've made six or seven, I believe, so far this year, which is a, a good number for the high school. Um, because we generally don't do as many as the, the younger grades. Um, and then of course, all communications are documented on the, the attendance outreach that is checked daily. So we, we have a pretty good process going on at the, at the high school that seems to work to help re-engage students.
And similarly, at the middle school, um, we also instituted the office hours on any all remote day, which is either Wednesdays. Or anytime, uh, that the entire building goes remote. Um, I'm not gonna lie, I was a little bit skeptical of middle schoolers using office hours in the beginning, but. They love them, teachers love them, there's waiting lines in, waiting for teachers during office hours, it's a really great support tool. Um, and our student support team meets every Friday morning. Um, and so one of the roles of the grade level coordinators is in their grade level meetings. That they discuss students that they have concerns about, whether it's academic or any other concern. Um, and they re, and they report that to, um, our student support team. Um, and we tackle it there and come up with, uh, specific interventions for that particular student in that family. Um, and we also have. A way of, you know, if one staff member is really working with a family without success. Then sometimes we escalate to other staff members and sometimes it's just. Who they make the connection with, not what the intervention is. Um, and we've, um, been having a lot of success with students that were fully disengaged. Um, getting re-engaged into the learning environment.
One of the things that actually surprised me when I was doing the, um, interviews of students for the TSI work. Pretty much every student mentioned, because they had just moved to it. Um, pretty much mentioned that they really liked the idea of the office hours, that that was something that was very helpful to them personally. Um, and as I was talking with their friends.
If we have, uh, I, I'm sorry, if. Number of disengaged students, uh, I think, um, I cited that in my email. Karen, um, Brooks had mentioned that there was, uh, sixty-four children disengaged. What, can you break that down between the high school and the middle school and, and what? Besides for the home visits, if we can't get them engaged, what, what are the next steps? And am I correcting my numbers?
I, I don't have a breakdown between buildings for disengaged. Um, you know, I, I think we, we work really hard to engage as many as we can. And. We continue to work, you know, it's not like we do this intervention, then this one, and then this one, and if it doesn't work. You know, we let them go. We're, we continually try to, um, bring in as much help as we possibly can. So sometimes that means, um, filing a PINS report, which is a person in need of support. Uh, through Ulster County, sometimes it's Child Protective Services if the students aren't coming to school. Um, you know, we really try to do as much wraparound as we can using, you know, with cooperation with Ulster County. Um, and as Ryan mentioned, you know, sometimes it's not that, you know, it's that they don't respond to. Me as a person, but they might respond to Matt talking to them or, or something like that. So, uh, so I, I don't know, you know, there. There's not, there's not kind of the one end-all, be-all, this is the final step. It's, we just keep trying and keep trying and keep trying and hope that. Um, at one point we break through in some, in some fashion and, and of course, the other thing is when we look at elementary versus high school. Um, you know, in elementary school, it's much more about family support because it's the family getting the student to school. So, um. There, there again, much more interventions with families, whereas at the high school, sometimes that's more individualized with the individual student. And so it's, it's much more one-on-one time with that student. And in fact, sometimes we're working with their families. To encourage their students to not only come to school, but then participate when they get here. So. As Tom mentioned at the beginning, you know, that is one area that we, I'm very proud of in Highland. I think we work very, very hard to make sure that students feel some connection or feel some. Feel that people want them to be here and that we care about them. But so Sue, you know, I, I, I can't tell you that. The then what, but we don't just give up at any point.
So, but are the numbers accurate? That was in Karen's report, about sixty-four students were disengaged. Is, is that accurate or?
Karen, you'll have to talk about that. Truthfully, I don't, I don't know. It might be across the board that that would be the number. Karen, do you have any?
The numbers were pulled the entire district. We, I went to strict guidelines for what we were given to by the RIC for pulling that information for, um, the, for the foil. And those numbers were for the entire district. I don't have it broken down though. For what would be elementary, what would be middle, what would be high school, and those are absences. And it could also be students that were. Um, had COVID that were out ten days or four because of serious illness.
If I could just jump in, one thing I would say, Sue, is that our number, and I believe this would be the same at, at all three buildings. Um, that number fluctuates. So a child may be disengaged for a short period of time. And we work with that family and they get the child, the child back into, um, you know, participating. Um, and then somebody else may, may need some of that support. So I'm not really sure where that number of sixty-four comes from. Because it's, it's a fluid, it's a fluid thing. So, um, you know, kids that maybe were disengaged for a short period of time. Are back on track in, in our area. I know for, for sure that we have a few at the elementary school that, you know, fell off our. Fell off the, um, the radar for a short period of time, but they're back on and they're participating now.
I, I hear you. It was just, uh, in Karen's report and it was just concerning.
Absolutely, and, and that's where. You know, there's, there's so many different factors and of course, we can't get too many into particulars here, but we do try, we, we follow up as much as we possibly can with, with the students. Um, I'm sure if you, you know, if you had the opportunity, each of the principals would be able to name off. Several of the students that we're working on right now. Any other questions?
Sarah, Sarah, real quick, I might have asked this once before. All our, all remote students or all our students have devices, right? We've given all our students devices.
Everybody has devices. Sometimes, some, some students chose not to take a district device. But they still have their own device that they're using.
Do we have any students that do not have the ability to connect at home with those devices?
Not that I'm aware of. That was one of the things that we really worked hard on at the beginning of the school year was. Um, if we had students that didn't have reliable, um, internet access, we provided them with access.
Thank you.
And, and actually throughout the year, you know, if things have come up or situations have changed, the tech office has been very responsive to that. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Uh, I wanna thank all the administrators certainly, putting that together again. Uh, you know, we are very proud of, you know, our engagement with students and, you know, like anyone, you know. We still have room for improvement in, in all these areas, we know that, but we certainly. Uh, like I said, are doing a fantastic job and we are absolutely always have been moving in the right direction in this category.
Yes, again, um, just to echo Tom's, uh, words, I wanna thank, uh, all our administrators, you know. Joel, Matt, Ryan, Megan, Bill, Kevin, Sarah and Tom also. We've gotten a lot of information here or, or the board members, so. Uh, it's gonna take you some time to digest all this. If you have any further questions, just reach out to the building principals or Sarah or. Uh, I know it's a lot that was given to us, so it might take some time to reread it all and digest it all. But thank you to the whole administrative team. Okay, uh, moving on, um, acceptance of reports. Be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation that the superintendent acknowledges reviewing and accepting the following reports that is presented at this meeting. I know we've lost Mike Picasio, so, uh, we'll only have six board members, uh, voting on our resolutions tonight. Uh, Board of Education meeting minutes January twelfth, twenty twenty-one and January twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one. And our claims audit report, January twenty twenty-one. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Sue, second by Ed. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? So carried, I believe it was six, zero. Um, our principal's report. Joel, you're back up.
Hello again. Uh, so just some updates on my principal's report. Uh, kindergarten registration for the fall is underway. Elizabeth Salanitri got that press release out, uh, recently, so parents should please call her at six nine one. One zero three two to get a registration packet so that we can get our numbers together for fall. Uh, an update for Life Touch Pictures, um, there's a link that was posted on Facebook and sent out to the parents. And also put on the student seesaw and Schoology accounts. Um, parents can sign up for appointments, uh, if they are remote. Parents to come in the evening of March eighth and March ninth. We are doing a limited number of, uh, photos during each five-minute segment. So that we can keep, uh, the flow of traffic moving, but also we can keep social distancing, um, in place. Um, report cards, report cards were supposed to go home last Thursday. Um, but due to. You know, the, the, um, going remoteness and, uh, all of those things, we had to move report cards to Monday. So cohort ones, report cards went home on Monday with a remote day today, remote day tomorrow. And then cohort one comes in on Thursday, the cohort two report cards won't go home until Friday this week. But they are coming, they're ready to go. The remote report cards have all been mailed out. And Clink, I know board members all received a nice package from me. Um, the package that we sent, Mr. Darling's gonna speak a little bit about, um, Black History Month. Because that was some of the stuff that was in the packet, but I took the opportunity since we were delivering you a packet to deliver you a Clink bag. So please fill that Clink bag, take it to the station. Some board members have already done it, so thank you very much. If you can get your picture taken, we'd love to put you on the website that you're participating. The one thing that we're pushing this year with the Clink bags is please make sure you knot them. We were told by Hannahford that some of our bags went to the Clink station and because people tied them in a nice bow. The bags opened and the bottles came out and then they don't get credited to us. So please knot your bags and take them to the station. If you need more bags. They're in our lobby. And I believe Mr. Bon Jovi has a supply in his office. Uh, Black History Month, that was part of that package. Mr. Darling did a lot of work, uh, on this, so I'm gonna let him speak. Um, about the work that we're doing this month to celebrate Black History Month.
Thank you, Joel. Um, and as Joel mentioned, um, a couple of days ago, we had sent out the package that also included. Uh, I Am Enough by Grace Byers. And, um, and I believe it was the last board meeting. Joel went through a list of activities that individual grade levels have done in the past and, and continue to do throughout the course of the year. Um, but we definitely wanted to take the opportunity or not miss an opportunity to celebrate, um, Black History as. Our history across the building. Uh, so K two was actually able to get behind utilizing I Am Enough as a mentor text for their students. Um, so that was one of the books that was purchased over the summer through that equity line of funding. And the students have really taken to it, um, especially in K one. So then we went out and. Secured more copies for our second grade students because it was, it was such a hit with kindergarten and first grade. Um, and if you haven't had a chance to read it yet, uh, in that package, I would encourage, um, that you take a few moments to read it. It's, it's a. It's a New York Times bestseller by Grace Byers, um, published, uh, twenty eighteen, I believe. And it really does a nice job of celebrating, uh, all of our students' uniqueness and individuality and celebrating diversity. Um, so, you know, utilizing that as a, as a mentor text, the individual grade levels from. K first and second are going to create murals, um, for students where they're going to be writing their own self-affirmations. Um, like I am beautiful, I am proud, I am loved, I am kind, all those, um, kind of things. To celebrate, uh, their own uniqueness and their experience in, in Highland Elementary School and within the community. Um, so for example, kindergarten came up with a, um, they're using a, a flower. So basically in the hallway, the mural is a flower, the students', um, affirmations will be written on petals. That'll surround the flower. Um, and as we, you know, as we continue that work, we're, we're taking pictures so that we can. Share those at the end of the month as everything is complete. And then for our third through fifth grade students, we took, um, a different approach to, to more specifically focus in on individual. Um, historical figures in, in Black History. So you should have also received a list of, of historical figures. That each classroom or, or the grade levels focusing on. And we wanted this to be, um, all encompassing, you know, a, a number of the conversations. We've had at the district committee, um, and at board meetings has been. You know, the idea that we wanna get away from or, um. Avoid just teaching a whitewashed history about Martin Luther King and Rosa Parks. So trying to incorporate, um, as many different figures as possible. And, uh, you know, whether it's sports or writers or activists or, um, you know, presidents. Um, just everyone and students, you know, we wanna provide students with the opportunity to relate to, um, people that have been. Uh, part of their life, you know, so Barack Obama, for example. Um, as opposed to, as opposed to just people of the past, um, we wanna incorporate the present as much as possible. And so basically each class will, will study this, um, the person that, you know, they were designated. And then create a collaborative poster, um, where each student colors and, and cuts out and glues a, um. An individual square that's eight by eleven and they organize it in a way that it creates this mosaic. Um, really nice pictures of these historical figures. And then it lends, you know, this activity lends itself nicely to broader discussions about, um, community and working together, you know, when we. When we look at our individual pictures, what we started with, it, it's just a, you know, an eight by eleven square of something that doesn't. Really make any sense. And then when we work together and we put that together, um, we create this beautiful image with all these, you know, beautiful colors. Um, and so definitely emphasizing the teamwork and community aspect of our school as well as celebrating, um. Some of the, some of the most important people in Black History and, and our history. And, you know, with that being said, um, going back to some of the work that we've done with TC. Uh, trying to, trying to incorporate this as, uh, inclusively throughout the course of the year as possible. So not just. You know, today we're studying Black History because it's Black History Month, um, and checking that box. But a much broader sense of, you know, the, these are the values that we stand behind as a, as a school and a community. Um, and weaving them in the fabric of the building. This, one of the challenges that this provided us this year was incorporating activities that can be done both remotely. And for our hybrid students, because we don't wanna exclude students that, um, are in the remote modality right now. So we were able to incorporate, um, those remote sections by using, um, both poetry and informational writing. So those remote classes will be working with the rest of their grade level, their hybrid grade level, um, to do, you know, to study these historical figures. To do informational texts, uh, to write informational texts about them. And then also doing things like, um, using Amanda Gorman's poem from the inauguration recently. As a, as a mentor poem, um, to write their own poem about some of, some of these historical figures. Uh, so this is something that we're gonna have hung up in the main hallway, in the third grade hallway there. Um, and then, you know, we'd like to do a video of, of the hallway by, we're thinking fifth graders. Um, and kind of walking through as a gallery wall. And kind of walking through as a gallery walk that we could then share with the remote students to give them a sense of being in the building and experiencing that as if they're walking through the hallway and seeing some of the, you know, they end up being 35 by 42, I believe. So they're pretty big pieces of art that I think our students will be proud of and you know, spotlight some of the work that's being done at the building level.
And then the only thing that I would add is I would like to give a gold star to Sue. Because she's already read her book and returned it to the elementary school. So, thank you. Board members, I would love for you to be able to keep those books, but as I mentioned in the letter that I sent home to your house, we really would love to have those books back when you're done with them. It doesn't have to be this week. So that we can include them in our book room and catalog them so that teachers can sign them out to use them in small groups with their students in future years. And as this initiative continues, we'll continue adding new titles and each year we can add a, a different flavor to the, to the book room, which is really what we wanted to do. And I just see that Camille, you also turned in your book, but you sent it to the district office, which that's great. So you get a gold star also. Mr. Bon Jovi will have to deliver that book to me. Thanks so much. Anybody have any questions?
The book was beautiful.
It was, wasn't it?
Thank you, Joel.
And the nice thing about that book is it's, it's not very long, the words are not that difficult, so our youngest students are able to read that book. So that, that makes it even better. And we do know that after, after a book like that is shared with a class and it's put up in the chalk tray. It's the book that every child in K1 and 2 wants to have at their desk. So as we continue this, we'll, we'll continue to in, include new books into those rooms. So, sorry Heather, go ahead.
No, I agree that that, it's a beautiful book and it's, it really is, we've been making very good use of it here. So I will certainly be returning it soon, but my kids have been certainly enjoying it a little bit more probably. Really care, it really is here to their ages, so they are definitely enjoying it.
Good. Wonderful.
So I just wanted to say too, thank you for sharing that and just something about that can be used throughout the year. So that's why I appreciate it too about reading a book that is just not exclusive for Black History Month.
Yes, thank you.
Getting in a code with you, Camille.
Any other?
Yeah, Camille, you have a little bit of an echo. I was able to, I was able to hear what you said, but it was a little difficult.
Oh, sorry, I had my panel, my computer panel. I, I was just saying that I, I appreciate that that book can also be used throughout the year. So it just wasn't for Black History, but if we use throughout with the, the message that it provides.
Right. Well, and that was the nice thing about all of those books that we purchased, most of them are in classrooms already. So they're, they're in the classroom libraries and they're leveled, so students can have those as part of their, you know, just their regular experience within the classroom. Yes, we're doing something special with this one book, but all of those other books are, are special as well, but they're great because the students can actually have them in their hands.
And you have a question for Joel? Thank you, Joel. And Matt, Ryan?
Hi again, everyone. I'll be brief. I did outline a lot of the activities for Black History Month in my principal's report. But just changes and additions today, Life Touch, the company that does our pictures, did cancel our dates for this week, so I did send out a notification to parents this afternoon as soon as I had found out that they could not be changed. So they will be getting back to us and we hope to have those scheduled in the next, they're saying two, two to three weeks, but I do not have those dates yet. But as soon as I do have those out or as soon as I do have them, I will get them out to families because that was supposed to begin for us tomorrow. Also, there has been discussion amongst parents, community members and students that this year NJHS Community Service Hours are particularly difficult due to the fact that a lot of organizations don't let outsiders in at the moment. So getting their volunteer community service hours has been difficult. But today I met with the advisors and the students met as well. And they will be doing community education projects for community service hours, picking topics that they care about to educate our Highland community about that. And they will be doing it in a multitude of ways, but I just wanted to let you know that that will be coming. And they will be visible projects throughout our community. And as they come up, I look forward to sharing them with you. If you have any questions about my principal's report, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Hey, Ryan, I just wanted to thank you for the newsletters. So just as a parent, I appreciate just the the effort with the communicate, with the communication throughout the year.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ryan. Bill?
Hello again, everyone. You may have noticed that I devoted almost the entire second page of my principal's report to highlighting how different departments in the high school plans or they are acknowledging and celebrating Black History Month. So I will not, in spirit of brevity, I will not read through that. I am hoping that when Farah gives her report, the one thing I did leave out is the multicultural clubs' efforts throughout the school. So I'm hoping that when Farah reports, you can talk a little bit about that as a member of the multicultural club. My one addition to the principal's report, well, I had one addition, I'm going to say, then I'm going to retract it. Life Touch, Life Touch School Pictures makeup days were scheduled for next week, Tuesday and Thursday for both hybrid students and all remote students. They were after, late afternoon hours. Because we had to pivot to all remote instruction, those will now be rescheduled. We're waiting to hear from Life Touch. We reached out to them today, so we're waiting to hear when that will be. Hopefully, it'll be soon, once we return to the building. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Bill?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody have any questions for our directors? I believe we have most or all our directors here this evening. So if you have some questions, hopefully they can answer them for you. Okay, I guess our, again, our directors are doing an excellent job. Questions for them? All right, moving on. Excuse me, someone have a approval on committee, of committee on special education minutes. Be resolved, the Board of Education hereby accepts the recommendations of the CPSE and the CE, CSE committees. According to the information provided in regard to meetings and classified status of students. Meeting date range, January 6th, 2021 to February 3rd, 2021. All meetings were held virtually either through Microsoft Teams or Zoom platforms. Total of 17 meetings held. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, second by Tom. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? So carried. Under personnel. Does anyone have an issue taking personnel as a block from A through K and then we'll handle the rest, the addendum I or L, I'm sorry. Separately. You have anything that you want to pull out, we can pull that out and make a motion separately. I would like to pull out coaching appointments, Jay, from, from the block. There, everyone, okay, moving the rest of those forward as a block? Okay, can I have a motion to move them forward as a block, A through K with the exception of Jay? We got a motion by Heather, second by Ed. Discussion?
So just wanted to point a few things out to the board. I know we discussed the, some of these matters in executive session, perhaps publicly. So with the payroll positions, remember, so under A, personnel, so we have to, we're removing that, we're making that a non-aligned position if you recall. So that is the removal of position, just means that that title is coming out of HSA and it's becoming a non-aligned. So then B, we're creating the new position of payroll clerk. The, anything, I believe, I think, I'm not sure if the board members have the corrected one, under F, under resignations. The first one, Shannon, that's a school monitor, it's not food service. I'm not sure if everyone had the correction. And anything else, I will hold for once we pass it.
Okay, we have a motion to take personnel as a block from A through K with the exception of Jay by Ed and second by Heather. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? So carried, six, zero. Mr. Bon Jovi, do you have some recognitions and?
Yes, so I know that Lindsay Idell is here on the Zoom, so want to welcome Lindsay. She's our new payroll clerk. So maybe Lindsay could just pop in and just say hi to the board.
Hi, thank you, everybody.
And then we have a few retirements on today's list.
Yeah. I'm just getting to that. So yes, we have a few retirements. We have Darcy LaFier, she's the certified occupational therapist. So she's been with us 18 years, that's amazing. Certainly Mary Morano, 23 and a half years. She has been amazing. Thank you very, very much for all your dedication. And then Vicky Diaz, cook at the high school, so she's been here 25 and a half years. So that's a, that's a lot of lunches she's cooked and served. So thank you very much to Vicky and we wish her, all of them, the very best of luck.
Okay. Under J, appointments for coaching be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation superintendent approves the following coaching appointments as presented to the board at this meeting. Employee Mike Milliman, JV volleyball head coach, February 4th, 2021. $2,700 stipend. Employee Amanda Griffin, varsity girls swim head coach, February, effective February 4th, 2021, stipend $3,000. I just want to add to the resolution like we've done for our other coaching appointments. That this resolution will only be in effect if the sport team fulfills the season. So can I have a motion to move the coaching appointments? Motion by Sue, second by Camille. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? I have one opposition to the JV volleyball head coach. And I have no issues with the varsity girls swim head coach. Resolution carries six, I'm going to say it's six, one. That's a separate resolution for both of those.
Be five, one, right?
Six, zero, five, one.
Yes.
Well, Mr. Brown, just one other thing, I didn't realize, I think if they're still in here in the Zoom, it was hard for me to see everyone who was here. So Barbara Lockner was appointed to teaching assistant at the elementary school for the remainder of the school year. I believe Barbara is, is on the Zooms. I just want to congratulate and thank Barbara and welcome her to Highland for the remainder of the school year as a TA at the elementary school.
Okay, and one recognition for, for service to the district, Lisa Gillette. As she is resigning, moving on to another position with another district. So thank you for your time served here at Highland. We appreciate it, Lisa.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure. You have a wonderful team. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. We have an addendum that was brought in for tonight's meeting. I'll read it. Be resolved, the Board of Education upon the recommendation superintendent approves the following probationary appointment as presented to the board at this meeting. Victoria McLaren, physician, school business administrator, business office, Valerie Nile Line, $138,000 pro-rated, effective about or be, or before May 10th, 2021. Probationary period, May 10th, 2021 to May 9th, 2025. Tenure area, school business administrator, purpose replacing Lisa Gillette resignation. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, second by Sue. Discussion?
So certainly, we are very excited to have Victoria McLaren join us here at Highland. She is a highly experienced administrator at the central office level, but especially 14 years as a business administrator. So it'll be a seamless transition. Certainly, I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, I didn't forget her. So, you know, certainly I want to thank Lisa Gillette. And she's still here for the rest of the month. Don't worry, I'm going to make her work very hard until, until that time. So we are very excited and welcome Victoria to the Highland team.
Anybody else? All those in favor? Opposed? So carried, six, zero. Hey. Our student reps. Barrett is here, I believe. I'm not sure if Jake is on.
I'm here. I'm using my mother's computer.
Okay, I got you, Jake. Farah, you want to go first and give a little update?
Yeah, sure. So for the high school, in celebration for Black History Month, the high school's multicultural club has been actively providing historical facts of African-American history via the announcements. And on a historic timeline, we've created on the main lobby's bulletin board. The multicultural club has also created an interactive Google forum so that students and staff alike can engage in Black History. The responses on the Google forum will be hung on the, in the high school's language hall, so we can further celebrate Black History. For the middle school, the middle school has kicked off its student council food drive to donate to the local food pantry. And the middle school National Junior Honor Society is now hosting a sock drive to donate socks to the Poughkeepsie Home Center. Middle school virtual classes seem to be doing well and clubs and advisors are working hard to making fun and valuable experiences for everyone. And it seems that students and staff are doing well in adapting to remote and hybrid learning. For high school seniors, I think that we are doing well in adapting to hybrid and remote learning, even though we have been thrust into all remote currently. I think what seniors are kind of trying to look forward to in these times are like senior events that have been canceled. So that is what we're trying to navigate through. Thank you.
Great.
Hi. So I have been talking to the elementary school, keeping up with them. This is the book that I believe everyone has received. I think it's really great that we're keeping up with this and making sure everyone's feeling comfortable. And I find it incredibly impressive that they're, they're going to be making a bunch of these in their school, just off of books, just all the important people that should be celebrated this month. And as well as the recycling, I have my bags getting ready to start collecting the cans that I, I need. And that's, that's pretty good for the elementary school. In the high school, we've been, like Farah said, we've been, you know, trudging along as the best we can and finding ways to enjoy our time. Me and Farah have talked, hoping that we can find other ways to have a good time for our senior year other than what is normal.
If anybody have any questions for Farah or Jake? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to business and operations, budget transfers. Be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation superintendent approves the following budget transfer for the 2020, 2021 school year as presented to the board at this meeting. Budget transfer number 5536 for $155,000. Budget transfer number 57- Budget transfer number five, seven, three, seven for one hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. Budget transfer number five, seven, six, eight for fifteen thousand, fifty dollars. Budget transfer number five, eight, six, one for forty-five thousand dollars. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, seconded by Ed. Discussion?
Mr. Gillette, could you just review those for the board and for the public, what they are?
Or the first budget transfer, five, five, three, six for one hundred and fifty-five thousand. That is for the. Band bond anticipation note, it's part of the principal payment that will be made in June. The second transfer, five, 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 seven, three, seven for one hundred seventeen, four, seventy. That is for benefits from benefits to a supervisor salary. From software to a Bosse's code and for other salary codes, special education. And custodia supplies to materials and supplies. The third budget transport, transfer, five, seven, six, eight for fifteen thousand, fifty dollars. That is to cover a software purchase for transportation. And the last budget transfer, five, eight, six, one is moving forty-five thousand from. Support staff salary to administrator salary.
Anyone have any questions for Lisa? We have a motion by Camille, second by Ed. All those in favor? Opposed, so carried six zero. Athletic uniform surplus be resolved, the Board of Education, Board of Education upon a recommendation, the superintendent. Approve the athletic uniforms be handed out at no cost to students. Or dispose of in accordance with district policy in New York State municipal and school law as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, second by Tom. Discussion?
So in this meeting with Mr. Alfonso, we do have a, you know, handful of uniforms, they're obsolete, they're older. We don't use them anymore, we don't need them at any level. So but instead of throwing them out initially, you know, what we'll do is at the high school. Upon the approval of the board tonight, we'll put, you know, we'll put tables out in the upper deck there and. Just kind of have them out for students to take if they want to. I might head up there and get a few things myself. And then once we've exhausted that, then they'll be disposed of.
Good, I believe there's a few wall baseball uniforms there, so if anybody wants them dated back into the thirties or forties.
That's right.
Any, any questions? All those in favor? Opposed, so carried six zero. Formax folding machine surplus be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation, the superintendent approves the disposal of Formax check folding machine. And dispose of it in accordance with district policy in New York State municipal school law as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, second by Heather. Discussion?
Yeah, we, we, we got a new folding machine that's better, faster, so.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed, so carried six zero. Flex spending account carryover from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year be involved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation, the superintendent agrees to adopt the request to make plan changes. To the flexible spending account that will allow the carryover of unused funds from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one school year. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Sue, second by Camille. Discussion?
Didn't know you could do that.
Lisa Gillette, did you want to just talk about that a little bit?
Yep, well, it was a new law, new federal law signed in December. Part of the FS, the coronavirus relief act, and this is allowing folks to carry over funds. It has to be a board resolution in order to do so, just one year.
That's good stuff, okay.
Hey, any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed, so carried six zero. Change order, they'll ignore eight million dollar capital project be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation of the superintendent. Hereby approved, they'll sign more blacktop paving incorporated change order for project number blah, 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 as presented to the board at this meeting. For rock removal, two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and twelve cents. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, second by Tom. Discussion?
Rock removal in the front of the building when they were doing all redoing the front.
Mills High School?
Yes, sorry.
Any, any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed, so carried six zero. Change order, Darlin Associates for the eight million dollar capital project be resolved, the Board of Education upon a recommendation, the superintendent approves Darlin Associates change order for project. I'm not going to read the number as presented to the board at this meeting. Change orders for high school library painting and miscellaneous work for twenty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-five cents. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Sue, second by Heather. Discussion? All of them favor? Opposed, so carried six zero. Okay, Lisa bus referendum, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, what you're going to see, can you see the screen now with the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes.
So at the January meeting, Mr. Miller introduced. The concept of purchasing two sixty-five passenger buses and two thirty passenger buses. At that time, we had an estimated cost of a little over four hundred and fifteen thousand. We have since received the final quotations and it brought the cost down to three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. That's the only difference between the January meeting and this meeting tonight. So as you can see on your agenda, there is a item to approve the proposition. You do not have to do this tonight, you can wait to the March second or you could wait to the March sixteenth meeting. But I thought I would present this to you.
Anybody have any questions in regards to the bus referendum? Just for an FYI, last year, our bus referendum was for four hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars. And that was purchasing two sixty-five passenger school buses and three thirty passenger school buses. So we are on track of keeping our fleet current and, you know, moving the older. With numerous miles on it out of the, out of circulation. Any other questions in regards to our bus referendum? Do you want to move?
Yeah, I, I was going to ask if we could hold it till. March meeting.
Okay, we can hold it to our, our first March meeting, I don't want to get in a situation, one year we.
Right.
Deadline, so.
Right.
I believe we're still within the window of opportunity, right, Lisa, for, for the March?
Yes, yes.
I believe it's our March second meeting, right?
Yeah, I, I'd like to have, so once we know more about our. Was it the levy? On how it's going to impact the taxpayers.
Okay. Any, well, anybody else have any input? We're all okay with holding it until March third? I can't see everybody, but I'm assuming we're okay.
Speak up.
Good, okay. Next one is our capital equipment presentation. This is not new, but it's new to our meeting, we've, we've. Ran through this last year, I believe, Mr. Miller and Ms. Gillette is going to go through that.
Yeah, so if you recall, I'll just give a quick introduction while they're pulling up the presentation.
Hold on, Lisa, am I pulling it up?
Yeah, I have it, I have it.
Okay.
Okay, so, you know, we did present. The capital, this capital equipment presentation last year. We talked about some of the items that, you know, the, you know, Mr. Miller and his crew need to kind of keep the, you know. With the wheels turning. After reviewing that presentation last year, it was decided that we did drop that, we did not propose that last year to the voters. So we are bringing this back to the board for your consideration, obviously, we're not making any decisions tonight. But we just want you to give, give you this information so you have time to digest it and we can make a decision next month. Okay, Mr. Miller and Ms. Gillette?
Hey, Lisa, can you have a third slide, please?
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Miller?
Okay, so as we go through this and the. The number value that's at the bottom dovetails into Lisa Gillette's. Debt service and, and her tax cap information to help out with the tax levy as it moves forward. But the last time we bought equipment in on a referendum was, I believe it was two thousand and fourteen. So at this point in time, we have a fairly old fleet and we have some other things that we have to add because of. New construction and things that we've done. So the first item is two Ford pickups to replace two pickups we already have, the pickups with plows, a two thousand and six and a two thousand and eight. The second item is a Ford three fifty. Dual wheel, four-wheel drive utility body truck with a plow. That's for a replacement vehicle for our maintenance guys, that they do all the maintenance going around the buildings and have a utility body on that truck. The third item is a Ford five fifty dump truck with a sander and a, and a Fisher V plow. It's to replace the big yellow monster we have, the two thousand and six IH dump truck, which is a stick shift. Basically, it's a town highway type truck. That truck is in rough shape. The twenty-foot integrity landscape trailer is to replace the two thousand and eight trailer, that's our truck. We use it for everything, we move all kinds of stuff all over the place. The cost of this trailer is a little higher than it normally would be because we had to raise the roof of the trailer. Five inches, so that we can put wrestling mats on it. So we use it for moving wrestling mats to different schools in our schools and all over the place. The Ventrack baseball groomer and renovator attachment is an attachment for the articulated tractor we already own. For working on the baseball fields. Be able to do a better quality grooming and do a lot better work a lot faster than what we're doing at this point in time. The tool cat utility work machine, it's a bobcat type vehicle, uses all the attachments we currently have for our bobcat. But a couple of things that with the construction at the high school and the sidewalks in the front and we use a broom. More than often than not for removing snow, so the broom we have can be used on the tool cat. While the snow blower is being used downtown and things like that to get the snow work done. Plus, the tool cat is capable of pulling our paint trailer when we go out onto the fields to paint the fields, which right now. We kind of fake it with the golf cart that we have that's left over from the Pete Watkins days.
Sorry.
The next item is a G electric scissor lift. This is spec to be able to reach the highest points in. The gyms and anywhere we've got to go in the buildings. We've spent a considerable amount of money over the last few years on rentals for lifts, so. This should be an economizer to a degree to be able to have a lift like this. We have already determined where it's going to be stored, so it's maintained and taken care of. So we don't have the issues we had with one that was donated many, many years ago that was in the barn up by the tennis courts. And the FTGR groom right seven foot is a groomer for the turf field that we need to have. And the total amount is three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and these are rough numbers at this point.
Just a quick question on, on that equipment, is there, I know for like the buses, there's the transportation aid, is there anything similar for this type of equipment or is that full?
No, there isn't any aid for this type of equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe, Lisa, when we went out to the voters. Believe it was in two thousand and fourteen, as Mr. Miller has mentioned, for a similar proposition. We spread those payments over five years, is that what we did? So we're, we're paid off on that original proposition back in two thousand and fourteen.
Yes, and that's what would be recommended for this proposition to be spread out over five years. I have not shared this yet with Bernie Donegan's firm, I will do that tomorrow. So they can give us an amortization schedule and then we can determine the impact on the tax levy, tax cap.
Okay. Firm believer that, and again, I'll, you know, I'll speak on behalf of the, you know, the operations and maintenance equipment referendum. I'm a firm believer that be effective and both efficient in, in running the department. The facilities department and be also. Cognizant of, of, of the money spent and how we purchase our equipment. And I think this cycle of five, six, seven years of putting a proposition from the voters. Is probably the right approach to maintaining of equipment that is useful. And does not cost us money as far as downtime, because in the past, we've had equipment that was fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years old. It was probably in the shop being repaired more than it was being put out to use, so. I think following a program where. Five, six or seven years, we, we propose a replacement referendum, I think is in the best interest of, of the district. And again. So you, we'll, we'll hold this until March, but if anyone has any concerns and. If you feel that there's some items on there that maybe we can, we can wait on, we'll, we'll present that to Mr. Miller and Lisa and. See if some of those items can be pulled off and reduce the overall cost of the proposition. Anyone else?
I, I agree with you, I agree with you, Alan. There's just a couple of questions I had, now Lisa, could you confirm, we can't use our capital reserve for any of this, correct?
I believe that is correct, it is, the capital reserve is restricted based upon the voter-approved. Language of that establishment of the capital reserve, so I have to look at that.
Would it, would it behoove us to maybe? Create and, and a maintenance and equipment reserve for future?
That I will investigate with our financial consultants, but I would say yes.
Yeah, I agree with you too on that one. I think it would be helpful, that was my initial thought as well, using that capital reserve if, if at all possible, but. You know, Lisa, if you wouldn't mind looking into that, I think it would be helpful.
Now we, I, I think this is all well worth it, we are replacing four vehicles, newest in about thirteen years old.
Hey.
It speaks for itself.
Right, and the beating, anyone knows the beating that any plow vehicle takes is, is incredible. So, you know, we are having to make constant repairs on some of these vehicles just because they are so old.
As far as a capital reserve for maintenance equipment, I mean, we're kind of doing this. doing the same thing as we did in 2014. We're spreading the payments over five years, which if we were to have a maintenance equipment replacement plan, you know, as far as a, an account, we'd be putting probably similar type of money into that, that reserve. And then at that five- or six-year period, the money would be there to spend for the equipment, if that's possible to create a reserve account for maintenance equipment. I'm not sure if that's doable, but the way we set it up initially is to spread the payments out over five years. So if you're looking at the, you know, $300,000 over five years, it's
Right, so $72,000 a year.
Yeah, for the full, what's the 350?
Yeah, Alan, I think in my mind is just kind of trying to think and get ahead of it rather than, you know, asking for it. And then, you know, if we have a reserve for it, it's kind of getting ahead of when we actually need it. It's just my thought if we can plan. But, you know, you make a good point because if we, if we spread this out over five years and then we try to do a reserve at the same time for the next few years, we'll kind of be doubling up, not only paying some of that and then also try to prepare for future, so.
True, true. And I believe the reserve would have to be approved by the voters also. And then approved to spend the money, if it's, if it's similar guidelines as our capital reserve for, for buildings is, it's got to be initiated with voter approval and then it's got to be authorized by voter approval to spend the money. So we're asking the voters to, to initiate two votes to start it and spend it.
I think the only thing, I think the only thing there in my mind is it gives us a little bit of extra like leeway to put money into that at the end of the year if there's, if there's money to transfer and then, you know, asking voters to spend the money versus asking voters for the money is a little bit, I think, easier.
Sure, I agree. I agree. And, and I mean, looking at all the items and knowing that we just put together an eight-million-dollar project that increased the sidewalk capacity at the high school and needing for, you know, snow removal there, the additional equipment is well needed for that purpose. We need that groomer for the new turf field because we just established a new turf field for practice. And I've always been one to say, if you start renting equipment on, on a yearly basis or even a monthly basis, you're better off purchasing some of those, that equipment and save the rental and have that piece of equipment for a good number of years. I, I, I think, you know, looking at the, at the schedule, all the items on there are pretty much in need. But then again, if you have any comments and you want to reach out to Mr. Miller or Lisa Gillette, you go right ahead and see if there are any items that possibly can get tweaked for, you know, bringing a revised proposition to our March 2 meeting. Anybody else? So we'll, we'll put this back on the agenda along with our transportation or bus purchase for our March 2 meeting. Hey, Lisa, you're up again, budget discussion.
Okay, as Lisa is loading the PowerPoint, what I'm going to present to you this evening is in accordance with the budget development calendar, the state aid and tax revenues and other revenues.
Lisa, just let me interrupt for one minute. So Lisa Serniglia, if you go along the top, do you see where home is on your screen, Lisa? Yeah, click there.
Now, this slide show, okay.
And then from beginning, then go over to the left and do, no, up, 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 from beginning.
Oh, from beginning, right there. All right, thank you.
Yay.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yep.
So next slide. Just, thank you. Okay, so so we do every year. The governor releases his executive budget proposal numbers in January. Tonight, we're going to talk briefly about state aid and revenues. And March 1st is the deadline to submit the tax out to the comptroller's office. You can go to the next one. Next slide, please. All right. So every year, the governor tweaks what he is going to propose. And for 2122, is proposing a flat foundation aid. A aid category called Services Aid, which consolidates 11 aid categories. Mostly expensed base aids. The largest of those 11 aids are BOSEs and Transportation Aid. Again, this is just a proposal. There's also a 3.85, go back, Lisa. There's also a 3.85 billion in Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. The CRRA was approved by the federal government in December of 2020. It will be allocated to the 2122 New York State budget. Again, it is a one-shot federal revenue that the state will use entirely in 2122. The governor is also proposing a 1.35 billion local district funding adjustment. And folks, this is a negative adjustment. If you remember several years ago, there was an adjustment called a gap elimination adjustment. This is similar to what districts had seen previously. And the last bullet is one that everyone, all my colleagues, we cannot understand why the governor included STAR as a state revenue source. STAR is not state aid. However, in the executive budget proposal, the governor is proposing that STAR be included as the state aid. So this this will have further discussion. Next page, please. The Services Aid, again, the largest values are the Transportation Aid and BOSEs Aid. The Services Aid also includes a reduction. However, Highland is one of the few districts that does not receive a reduction when the Services Aid are, is calculated. So that's a good thing. Next slide. All right. Sorry, this is so small. But what I did is I took the aid categories that will be combined under the Services Aid. As you can see, BOSEs, textbook, computer software, library, computer hardware and technology, Transportation Aid, including summer Transportation Aid and High Tax Aid. For the 2021 school year, it's 3,113,300. The proposed combined Services Aid for Highland for 2122 is 3,402,112. Okay? Remember, folks, this is just a proposal. All right? There's a difference between the two of about $288,000. Next slide. So that's the Services Aid. The second aid category or executive proposal is 3.85 billion in that CRRA fund. That's that federal one-shot revenue. It's also called the COVID-19 Supplemental Stimulus. Okay? The third item is the Local District Funding Adjustment. That's a negative. And they're saying it's the lesser of the STAR payment or the CRRA, the COVID-19 Supplemental Stimulus. When you get to the next slide, it will make sense. And the last thing is the inclusion of the STAR as a state revenue source. Don't understand that at all. Again, it's just a proposal. I'm hoping that he just threw that out there for negotiation purposes. Lisa, next slide. Okay. So understanding the executive proposal for CRRA, Local District Funding Adjustment and STAR. If you remember, in 2021, our current school year, there was something called the Pandemic Adjustment for 387,639. It was a takeaway of state aid. But what the governor did, what the state did, is they plugged it with the Federal Cares Act restoration for a same amount. So they took away state funding and some, and replaced it with federal funding. Okay? If you look at the next line, the Local District Funding Adjustment, you can see in 2122, it's a negative 1.5 million. But directly underneath it is the CRRA or the COVID-19 Supplemental Stimulus of 1.5 million. So what they're doing, or what his proposal is, similar to last year, taking away state funding and replacing it with one-shot federal revenues. You can see in 2021, it was about 387,000. 2122 proposal is 1.5 million. That's significant. So we're, we're looking more at New York State budget relying heavily on federal funds. And what happens when the federal funds go away? The bottom line is STAR. And this is the best that I can explain how the governor has proposed to use STAR and consider it school aid. In 2021, the district received 1.9 million in STAR. In 2122, you can see the proposal is 1.8 million dollars. That's a reduction of $67,833. So what we are trying to determine is how can STAR be considered a state aid when it's actually a tax revenue? The only way we can apply it to a state aid is actually just the reduction. Knowing that when we go out for our tax levy, it's automatically going to be reduced because of this executive proposal. We are, when the district computes the tax levy, it's computed with the tax cap calculation. STAR is not entered into the calculation at all. We do not know what STAR is because we, it depends on how folks apply for the exemptions, the basic exemptions and the enhanced STAR exemptions. It is out of the district's control. So basically, what I want to have you understand is the governor in his proposal is using the STAR as a state aid revenue, which it isn't. And I think the whole purpose is to show a reduction. Okay, next slide. It's another way to take money away from schools. What you see here is a summary of the executive proposal for state aid. You can see the first line, Foundation Aid is flat, 8.9 million. The second one is a Services Aid. That was, I went over with you in a previous slide, 3.1 in 2021 and 3.4 in 2122. Private and excess cost aid, there's the difference, that again is based upon pupil placements. Building aid will show an increase because we are finalizing the $8 million project and we're going to get those final cost reports in. The next line is the pandemic adjustment for 2021. You can see the minus and then the plus under that with the Federal Cares Act restoration. Well, that federal aid is gone. It was all used in 2021. However, it's being replaced by the COVID-19 Supplemental Stimulus and it's being taken away by the terminology called the Local District Funding Adjustment. And at the very bottom, you can see how that STAR reduction, that 67,0833 is applied to the overall state aid. So for 2021, the aid that was shown on the executive proposal was 13,901,826. What he's proposing for Highland is 14,286,826. Again, this is just a proposal. Next slide, please. So what does this mean overall for revenues? The very first line, you can see New York State AID budgeted 13,978,02. That's our existing 2021 budget. All of those numbers listed in 2021 are our actual budget numbers, okay? 2122 are the proposed revenues, that's second column. So as I just went over the previous slide, it's 14,286,826. The district receives federal aid from Medicaid of 65,000. I recommend that be flat. Payments in lieu of taxes, we're going to see a slight increase in 2122. That is from two pilot agreements. Other revenue sources total 629,021. And those other revenue sources are comprised of interest and penalties on taxes, charges for services, and refund of prior year from BOSEs. The Applied Reserve in 2021, we applied 21,367 and that was from the ERS and TRS Reserve. I'm proposing 28,000 for 2122. The next line is fund balance, applied to budget. In 2021, we had a little over a million dollars that we applied and we reduced that from 1.5 million in 1920. I'm proposing that we apply 1.3 million in fund balance. I feel that's a very conservative number with the unbalanced calculations I have completed. And the very bottom line, I'm sorry that's so small, is a calculated tax levy. The current tax levy for 2021 is 29,181,381. And I think that was just about 3% tax cap. That does not mean it didn't, folks did not have an increase in their taxes of 3%. That was the tax cap increase. For 2122, the initial computation is 29,895,072. Increase of 713,691 and that's approximately a 2.45% increase. That tax cap calculation for 2122 does not include the the bus or the capital equipment. So as soon as I have that information from our financial consultants, those amortization schedules for the buses and the capital equipment, that will change the calculated tax levy. So right now, your first blush, your first view of the proposed revenues for 2122. So right now, your first blush, your first view of the proposed revenues for twenty one, twenty two are coming at forty six, two forty one, nine oh four. An increase from the prior year of one million, two ninety five, five sixty five. Again, this is our first review. Will these numbers change? Absolutely. So right now, I'm feeling pretty good where we're at. Again, these numbers will be further defined in March and April as you go through your budget process. Um, next slide, please. And again, let's, where are we on the calendar? We're at February ninth, March first, I will submit a tax levy calculation. Again, I have to submit it. It can be changed after it's submitted. I just need to meet that March first deadline. Uh, March second is your next board meeting. You will have your total expenditures, your proposed expenditures. And then the sixteenth, you have another workshop and you will review your expenditures and your revenues. Lisa, can you go back to the previous slide, please? Can I answer any questions? Does anyone have any questions?
At. Lisa, in, in regard to the email answer from our financial planner, where his option number two, to use the excess monies from the twenty fourteen. Um, I, I don't know how to go about this proposal, but I think it would really be a great idea to use fifty thousand dollars per year to help help our money situation. And I, I don't know if the rest of the board had a chance to review his, his email.
There is, I wish I, I apologize, I don't have the total dollar amount in the debt service fund, but I'm pretty sure there's about six or seven hundred thousand in the debt service fund. I'm not talking about seventeen point five million project remaining funds. I concur. I think it would be a great idea to have a planned reduction of that debt service fund. But don't use so much where it skews your tax cap. I think fifty thousand is a conservative.
Right.
With his recommendation.
Right, that's, uh, that's what I'm saying. I'd like to highly consider going forward with that. But I don't know how to go about it.
So what that would do is you would have another line that would say from tran, interfund transfer from debt service. And that would, you would see it in the twenty one, twenty two proposed column of fifty thousand. And it would, when the tax levy limit is calculated, it would be part of the capital exclusion portion of the tax levy. What it would do is it would reduce the amount that we could raise by the tax cap. So it would show as an increase on one line and a decrease in the tax cap levy, tax calculation. So it can't be used just one place.
Lisa, just a quick question for you on the two point four five proposed. No, you're not comparing that to expenses. So is that two point four five? Is that like what our equivalent to the three percent is? Or how did you determine that two point four five?
Okay, if you remember in January, we went over the, the prior history of the tax cap calculation. Okay, this is just tax cap. We haven't even looked at expenditure side. This is just the revenue side. The tax cap calculation, you look at your prior year tax levy. Were there any pilots? Um, what is your capital exclusion? Capital exclusion is when you take all of your principal and interest payments on your debt and you subtract any stated. There's a, a dollar amount that's different. That gets added to your prior year tax levy and it comes up with this amount, twenty nine, eight ninety five, oh seven two. I can prepare a slide for you for the March second board meeting. Again, it's all part of the tax cap calculation, the prescribed formula.
So at this point, is that two point four five our cap?
Right now with without the lot on buses or the capital equipment.
Okay.
Or the fifty thousand.
And how would that, how would that ultimately affect it? That would make it go down?
Uh, well, they could go up.
Up, okay.
Because you'll be having principal and interest payments on the buses and the capital equipment. So there's an expense. But you'll have a deduct because you're applying the debt service fund. But it will make that number go up.
If we did just the fifty thousand like Sue was talking about, that would make it go down slightly. Okay.
Uh, Sue and Heather, reading that option two, our Bernie Donigan's office is cautious because it will affect the proposal they put forward at our, at our audit committee meeting and the combined support service a couple of weeks ago, that it's going to change, possibly going to change the overall size of that project that we were considering. Uh, or we would have to contribute more cash to that project to make it a no tax increase project to taxpayers. So i- if it's something that we're looking to move forward on a uh, another capital project in the near future, I think we need a little bit more information from Bernie Donigan's office in regards to utilizing that fifty thousand and how it impacts. Uh, because that's what I just read from, from their option number two. Did say that we have to use caution utilizing that fifty thousand.
Yeah, and I haven't, I honestly haven't gotten a chance to read through it. I apologize. I just was trying to understand the effect of it on the, on the cap.
Right, right. And I just glanced through it earlier today, so I really didn't have a chance to read all of them, but I know he did have that caution in there to utilize it. That, in his mind, that's the best option to utilize that fifty thousand to work down that, that reserve or that those funds.
Yep. Does anyone else have any other questions about the state aid proposal or revenue sources? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, any other questions with, for Lisa? All right, Sarah, your report.
Okay, I will be brief, hopefully. Um, I just want to share with everyone, we've been talking about the Panorama Climate Survey. I've mentioned it a couple of times over the last couple of months. Uh, we are ready to launch that survey starting tomorrow. So this is something, we sent an email home to parents earlier in the week. Parents will have the opportunity to take this. I'll be posting the link on the website tomorrow as well as on social media and we will be sending it home through the school messenger email. Students will be taking the survey, third graders through twelfth graders in, um, either on Thursday or Friday, depending if they're in person. Um, the remote teachers have the ability to choose whether they'd rather do it on Thursday or Friday. Um, and then our faculty and staff will be completing the survey over the next week. The parent survey will be open through Friday, uh, February nineteenth. So we'll, you know, we'll be sending lots of information about that. I'm excited to get the responses back. It, it does send the responses to us in real time. So by our next board meeting, I should have some data to share with you from that. And we will be using the results of those surveys in our ongoing T S I work, even though it's not written into the plan. Um, we still will be using that information to help us make decisions uh, about not only instructional materials and curriculum moving forward, but um, school climate as well. So I'm excited that that's up and off the ground and, and moving ahead starting tomorrow. The only other thing I had, I was at the Kingston Fieldhouse yesterday afternoon, uh, getting my second vaccine. Pretty much every other person in there was also a Highland teacher or educator. Um, so many of us in this district are getting our second vaccines this week. That's a really exciting sign, I think, for everyone. Um, moving forward that, that there's a light at the end of the tunnel. And I know we have several staff members who are still getting their, you know, their first dose too. So, uh, we're really moving through that well and appreciate everyone who's been willing to volunteer and have that done so far. So that's all I had.
Any questions for Sarah?
There, the vaccination, is that being tracked, um, at the district level at this time?
To an extent. I mean, there are some HIPAA things with that, so we can't really directly ask people if they have it, but um, yes, we have a decent idea of, um, we, in that first round, that first week, we had about a third of our staff uh, receive the first vaccine. So again, by the end of this week, we should have about a third of our staff who have gotten the second vaccine. And then, um, you know, this, those that weren't in that first round, it's being a little bit harder for us to um, monitor because there's so many different places now where they may be receiving the vaccine and it's, it's more random times. But we're trying to keep track as best we can. But again, it's something that people um, don't have to share with us if they choose not to. So we're, we're trying to keep track of it.
Anyone else? Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Yes, and just to follow up with what Mr. Dudley Lemic was speaking about the vaccinations and uh, what Camille asked, remember just to remind you that, you know, that the Mark Rider and the Ulster County Department of Health has designated a certain number of slots each week to Ulster County School Districts. This is unique to Ulster County. So, uh, we surveyed all faculty and staff um, of who still wants to get the vaccination. So there's over seventy people on that list right now. It does, it fluctuates. People come off and on. Uh, so last week we got fifteen slots. So those fifteen people did go last week for their uh, initial vaccination and we just sent out, I think today, the information on the next fifteen people. So, so, you know, last week and this week, that's another thirty people who are gonna be on the road to getting all their vaccinations. Uh, it's a little later on the agenda, but I'll just do it now during my superintendent's report, the support services update. We did have a meeting today. Um, some of the items that are left, so as we talked about already, you know, the library roof, it's technically, it's really, it's really the flashing, not necessarily the roof that there is a small leak. But you know, of course, that's caused by the installation of the roof. So our architect, Tom Richardson Thaler, is working on that. Um, you know, they're not still clear of how the water is getting in, but they certainly have noted with the installer that, that there's gonna be something different's gonna have to be done with the flashing, but obviously nothing's gonna happen now. Uh, so the snow is gone. Uh, the replacement of the central office ceiling tiles, so the correct tile that we ordered, will happen over the spring break. Uh, we will be receiving, we, uh, we have some sample colors, but we'll get some samples of the replacement roof materials so that the support services committee members can look at that, pick, uh, see what it looks like, pick the color and the trim color so that they can order the materials. As we know, everything on order is taking longer than normal. Uh, we'll be sending out the plans. We have the plans for the canopy for the central office entrance. That's gonna go out to bid to, uh, local companies. We're not gonna do it through, um, this project. And, uh, we'll be meeting quick soon with Tom Richardson Thaler about the, this interior design of the library, just to get some ideas. If you, when you get a chance, make sure you stop in. The carpet is in. It does look very nice. And then there's just a few different punch item lists that are being taken care of. We talked about, so one thing I want to talk about certainly sports, uh, and the uh, the way for sports that are going on right now and specifically the boys and girls basketball. So, I mean, we talked about, uh, in our earlier presentations, you know, we're about making connections, we're about keeping kids, you know, connected to school and engaged. Um, you know, I know that a lot of people were, you know, excited that, you know, even though it was gonna be a very short season, that we would be able to, um, have the basketball season, even though it's only gonna be six games and a month long. Um, and now with the shutdown, the high school going to all remote, you know, at least, you know, we did suspend all practices, uh, until we were done with all the contact tracing. Um, you know, it has been my philosophy that, you know, I, I know it, it impacts people, different people in different ways. But overall, I have to kind of look at what I think most positively impacts everyone. So I know it's a burden sometimes, like at middle school, that one grade is, has to be remote because of the contact tracing, but another grade doesn't have to be. And sometimes that can make things a little tricky for parents. But again, you know, our goal is to keep the students who want to be in the hybrid, to keep them engaged, to keep them coming. So as far as with sports, uh, with the boys and girls basketball, um, remember they just started up last week. Uh, they need, uh, six practices to begin the games. Uh, you have the boys still need one more practice at the varsity level. The girls need two more and three more practices for varsity and their JV before they would even start the games. The games start on the sixteenth, so if they are on hold and they don't start practicing again until next Friday, you know, they're probably only gonna get about two games, maybe three games, because they'll be coming back on the twentieth, have to do one or more practices. And then the season ends on the twenty sixth. So, uh, in speaking with Nurse Diane at the high school, you know, the boys varsity, remember, we don't necessarily have a large number of students or staff who are positive. We have a, a large number of students and staff who are impacted because of contact tracing. So that's why the school is closed. We just don't, we have, we will not be able to cover, nearly come close to covering all the faculty staff that have to quarantine. But it really minimally impacts the basketball program. So the varsity boys, they have just two students who are gonna, who will, will have to quarantine until next Thursday. Uh, and between the varsity and girls JV, they have, uh, four. So they still have enough students to field the teams to practice. So I wanted to float that out to the board. You know, would you be, uh, willing to allow the basketball to continue practicing? It would be, again, it would be after, you know, it would be at four o'clock. It'd be at, in, at the later hours. There's, you know, there's no one in the building, so theoretically, in a sense is, uh, couldn't be a safer time to come into the building to do that practice. Again, the students aren't coming in because there's not enough teachers to teach everyone. But it's just one basketball coach for each level. They can still, the, the girls, though, we would probably have to either find someone else or combine the girls and J, varsity and JV, uh, because the JV coach has to quarantine. So the only team that's affected by the coaching is the girls, but, uh, you know, we could easily um, remedy that. So I just wanted to get the board's input. I am supportive of allowing them to keep practicing so that we can, you know, get as much of the season in as possible. So I wanted to.
I agree. I'd be in support.
I, I do too.
Hey, all right, great. Um, you know, we don't need, necessarily need an official vote, but I just wanted to, um, you know, put that out there that, uh, again, obviously, just like it did, things can change, but at least let's try to give, uh, them as much a chance as possible of having the season as short as it might be. So I'll work with Mr. Alfonso on that. them as much a chance as possible of having the season as short as it might be, so I'll work with Mr. Alfonso on that. Um, the uh, last thing I have is um, I've been speaking with Mr. Alphonso, I had a little uh, initial discussions with uh, Mr. Barone. Just uh, you know, with March first, so fall sports starting theoretically. Um, you know, a trainer, we cut the trainer for this year. Um, you know, that was part of the budget, but you know, looking into the rest of the year, it would be nice to have a trainer. Even if it wasn't someone who was available every day in school, at least be available for the games, the home games that we have in the different sports. So Mr. Alfonso is reaching out to some of the different um, you know, um, facilities in the area that do have trainers. And this, you know, similar to last time, you know, I think this would, we would work it out, it's either going to be i- i- it very likely would be, it would just be a contract that we would have with an outside agency and pay them. So I believe last year, the full year trainer was about uh, sixty thousand dollars, so this is less than half a year. So it'd probably be in the area of twenty to twenty, at the most, twenty-five thousand dollars, I would imagine. To have a trainer for the remainder of the year for the students. So um, I just wanted to see if that's something the board would be interested in us to continue to investigate. We do have the money to do that.
Uh, Tom, that that trainer would be onsite at Highland?
It would be onsite at Highland, we're still, uh, it's not set. Whether it'd be like we had last year, where they'd be there every day, or they might just be onsite on game days.
Okay. That's fair. I I would be in favor of it, uh, only because uh, it would also be an 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 additional, you know, set eyes to help uh, monitor the uh, social distancing, the proper protocols for uh, was set up by uh, section nine as far as participation. So i- i- we're not gonna have fans there, so that can be a great help for both uh, watching the children, the student athletes as far as the protocols uh, set up for COVID nineteen and also be there to help with any, you know, medical situation or, or strengthening training.
Okay. All right, that is all I have, I know it's been a long meeting, we've had lots of, Camille?
We all had something.
So for clarification, was sports allowed to continue, does that include uh, indoor track as well and bowling?
Yeah, but, yeah, so track, they have to quarantine until next Friday though, because the whole team has to quarantine. But they have their practices in, they've been going, so yes, track and bowling would continue, because bowling is not affected at all. So bowling will continue, and then track will pick up next Friday.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, anything else, Tom?
No, that's it, thank you.
All right, under Board of Education, new business. The BOSI's annual meeting and board member administrative budget vote, it's an FYI, revised calendar. For be resolved, the Board of Education, upon a recommendation, the superintendent approves the following school calendar revisions for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one will be a half-day instruction day. February twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one will be a full-day instruction, can I have a motion, please? Motion by Sue, second by Tom, discussion.
Yes, obviously, you know, we, uh, you know, with all the missed time, that was just something that was initially in the um, schedule. We didn't want to interrupt uh, or shorten a day where students are in school. But we still do have need for, you know, some faculty, you know, some staff in servicing, so the half-day will be on a a remote Wednesday.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor? Opposed, so carried. Targeted school improvement plans for elementary and middle school be resolved, the Board of Education, upon a recommendation, the superintendent approves a targeted school improvement plan for the elementary school and middle school as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, second by Heather, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, so carried. Uh, I believe Tom has given us a support service committee update. Um, anything else under old business, anything for the good and welfare of the district? Any new business? Okay, just under miscellaneous, Elsics County School Board associate uh, meeting minutes and FYI. Lisa, did we receive any public comment? You're muted. You're muted, Lisa.
Muted.
All right, um, I haven't checked, but let me just do a quick check right now. If you don't mind. And no, I have not.
Okay. Uh, can I, we have no executive session, so can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Sue, second by Heather, all those in favor? Opposed, who would oppose that? Um, I want to thank everyone, I know it's a long, it's been a long meeting, but luckily, we're all home or in your office or wherever and uh, have a safe trip back home and see you on uh, March second.
Thank you, everyone, good night.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Be safe.